This meeting is called to order. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the open meetings law is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Welcome to the meeting on Monday, June 26, 2017. Let us all rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to elect a chair for, so that we are open to the floor for nominations.
A move that we elect Roy Christensen's chair for the second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The order of business for the Board of Equalization is as follows. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. These improvement districts are generally in response to petitions submitted by property owners whose land is benefited by the proposed improvement. These districts most generally encompass such items as water, sewer, paving, and ornamental lighting. However, the council does have the authority to enter into the field of sidewalk construction, storm sewer construction, graveling and grading streets, and into the general right-of-way acquisition for street purposes. Once these projects have been completed, the cost of these services are paid for by the city from its special assessing assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited property and reimburse its revolving funds. The cost of special assessments are computed by the Engineering Services Division and presented to the council for its review when sitting as the Board of Equalization as we are now. The clerk will read each district individually from the printed agenda after the district is read. A representative from the Public Works Department will make a brief statement about the district. After that, anyone wishing to make a statement may come forward. Will the clerk, and when you do, please state your name and address before making your comments. Clerk may read the first item now.
Yes, our first item is Water District 1208, 26th Street, from H to J Street.
Susie Philippi, Public Works. As she stated, this is Water District 1208. It's in 26th Street from H to J. It was created in 2015 by a request from Ken Flowerday, a resident who'd been having very poor water pressure and sediment in his line, and after working with the maintenance department, found that there wasn't much they could do because of the age of the line. This Water District went ahead and connected to another Water District that we had done the previous year that was in H Street from 26th to 27th. The design and construction management of the project was done by city staff. H.R. Bookstrom Construction was the contractor. The majority of the work was done in 2016. The total cost of the project came to $142,999.48. The city was subsidized $128,239.48. I want to remind you that Water Districts are capped at $40 a front inch foot. So the assessment total on this one will be $14,680. And those that are assessed have 20 years to pay plus interest. In this situation, there were seven property owners. Any questions?
Questions? Okay. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Next item, please.
All right. If not, the next item is Water District 1209, C Street, from First to Second Street.
This Water District was also requested in 2015 by Melody Cummings. Her request came because of numerous leaks. Again, a very old system that maintenance could no longer do because of the age of the line. This is one of those streets that there was a lot of non-embudding lines that they stretched to this parallel streets, piggybacking on each other. The design and construction management of this project was done by, again, by city staff. The contract for this project was K2 Construction. The construction cost for it was $129,071. The total cost was $145,473.58. The city was subsidized $131,473.58. We had a very unusual circumstance happen on this one, a gentleman who had already worked to correct his situation, and it spent a considerable amount of money to do it on his own. So taking that into account, several of the staff got together along with Carl, Don Tott, Donna Garten, and decided that the city would go ahead and pick up his assessment of $2,000. Any questions on this one?
Questions?
So how many property owners?
Seven, also on this one.
Other questions? Would anyone like to testify on this item? Seeing none? Let's move on to the voting session.
All right. If someone would like to make a motion to assess both districts?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then we need a motion to adjourn signee die.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Carl, seconded by Jane.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We will now open the city council meeting for 26th of June, 2017. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, like today, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. At this point in time, I'll point out that I've been told there may be people here who wish to speak in the open mic about Abbott Sports Complex. That has been referred to us by the Planning Commission, and it'll be on first reading on the 17th of July and public hearing on the 24th of July, so there will be no open mic on that subject tonight. So if you're waiting for that, please wait somewhere else until the 24th of July. Okay. Will clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes. Just a reminder, we do ask those giving testimony to please clearly state their name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our, do want to remind the public as well that due to the Fourth of July holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, July 3rd. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through seven. I will note for council that we do have an actual miscellaneous referral that was handed out. It's a setting the hearing date of Monday, July 10th, for Kelly's Pub at 1318 North 66th Street for the addition of an area measuring approximately 27 feet by 27 feet.
Would anyone like to testify on these items? Next item.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items, items one and two.
Oh, wait, we have somebody here?
Greg McAlton.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Well, we only have, when they're...
You can come.
You can come, yeah. Why not? If you want to come forward and talk. Usually, we reserve that for first-time appointments.
This is.
It's okay.
Hi, I'm Greg McAlton. I live at 1651 South 23rd, and I am here to take the place of, I believe, Tim Francis was the last Realtor that served on the Historic Preservation Commission. And so I'm here to offer my services.
Any questions from Mr. McAlton? Carl?
Yeah, just to clarify, our agenda says that you're being reappointed, but this is actually an appointment.
First time.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks for serving.
Sure. Thank you for being here.
You bet.
Thank you.
The resolution does say reappointment, so do we need to make a motion to amend on that?
Yes, in effect, the...
Okay.
For this calendar section.
Okay. Very good. All right. If no one else?
Please call the roll.
Then items one and two were introduced by Showb.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane. Please call the discussion? Please call the roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items four through six, or I'm sorry, four through seven were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Some days are harder than others, Carl. All right. Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward. Raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I will call items eight through 11 together as they are all manager applications. One is for June Weedman, Karen Brouette, Lori Madsen, and Michael Starkey for Whitehead Oil Company for Ustop Number Five at 8231 East O Street, Ustop 15 at 7100 Pioneer's Boulevard, Ustop 18, 110 West O Street, Ustop 27 at 1301 South Street. Good evening.
Welcome.
Would you raise your right hands?
Are you all here?
Whoa, there's a couple more coming.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Lori Madsen. Do you want the address of my home?
Doesn't matter, home or business.
110 West O Street.
Michael Starkey, 1301 South Street.
June Weedman, 3530 Oto.
Karen Brouette, 7100 Pioneer's Boulevard.
Any questions from council? Cindy?
Together, this is the Whitehead Oil Crew.
This is. Thing either.
Small portion of it.
Small portion.
Thanks for coming out today. I read all the applications, and I thought that these are great recommendations, and all of you did your training, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Next item. Would anyone else like to testify on these items? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 12, manager application of Heather Casebold for Country Inn and Suites by Carlson at 5353 North 27th Street.
Hey.
You raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Tell us about your application.
Well, I am looking to take over the liquor license for the hotel. It was previously in another manager's name, and she's no longer with us. And so now I'm the executive chef of JB's Kitchen and Bar, and so I'm there pretty much 24/7, have a liquor history, and so we thought it might be a good idea to put it in my name.
Questions from council members?
Yeah, Carl. So JB's is fairly new. When did you start your business there?
Okay, JB's, we did a soft opening on March 1st, and it was more of the grand opening in April. I moved into the kitchen in February. Prior to that, I was in sales and history-wide with catering and restaurant and food and liquor and all that good stuff.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 13, manager application of Lisa Nell for Bosses Pizza and Chicken at 1,000 Saunders Avenue. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be? Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name's Lisa Nell. I'm 1806 Knox Street, Number One.
Okay. Tell us about your application, please.
I am the Assistant General Manager at Bosses here in Lincoln. The previous assistant or co-manager, I guess, has moved to Keystone, South Dakota, to work at a Bosses there. So we're going through a change and hopefully putting me in as the name on the liquor license.
Okay. Questions? Carl?
Just, Ms. Nell, thanks for being here, and understand that you previously worked at this location, and then they brought you back, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And thanks for doing this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is item 14, application of Barkle Enterprises Doing Businesses Panic for a Special Designated License to Cover an Outdoor Area Measuring Approximately 45 Feet by 32 Feet at Panic Bar at 200 South 18th Street on July 15th between 8:00 p.m. and midnight.
It is that.
Tell us about your SDL application.
We...
We need to start with your name.
Sorry. My name is Beth Muehlinger. I'm the manager of the Panic Bar. I need to do this.
No.
Hi.
No.
Hi, I'm Beth Muehlinger, manager of the Panic Bar, and 200 South 18th. My personal address, 1629 North 21st here in Lincoln. We are applying for an SDL so that we can celebrate our 35th anniversary of the bar being in business. It also happens to be on that 15th, also happens to be the birthday of our owner who died a year ago. So we're trying to, we're bringing in a band and taking, we're not going all the way across the street, we're just going out past the, it's like an extended beer gun, and we're just going out past the parking lot itself, just around that area. It'll be fenced in, there won't be any exterior bars or any of that kind of stuff out there.
Okay. Carl?
Yeah. You've had events out there.
Many, many. And this is actually a lot smaller than what we usually do, because you, for many, many years, Pride was held down there, and we block off the whole street. And we originally were going to kind of do that kind of thing, and then Kara, the owner, decided to bring it back, rein it in just a little bit, because this is the first time we've done something like this on our, for us, instead of for Pride. So we don't really know what we're going to have, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Nope.
Because I can do this, I could do this all day.
We don't need it. We don't need it today. Okay. Would anyone like to testify on this item? Very well. The voting session? I need a motion. John's not here.
Some days are harder than...
Move approval of items...
Eight through 14?
Eight through 14, yes.
Second. Approval motion by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
All right. Next are our public hearing resolutions. Item 15 is the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of June 1st through the 15th, 2017.
Would anyone like to testify on this item, one of these items here?
Yep. Just state your name and address.
My name's Lori Swanson. I actually live in Omaha, but I'm representing my sister, Cindy Swanson, 4631 Valley Road. And I have some information for the council. So she is contesting a plumbing bill. She had a big 60-year-old tree in her front yard. The city notified her in October of 2016 that it was interfering with water pipes. They came out that month and took this tree out and fixed the pipe that was leaking. On this data that I've presented to you, this is water usage data, she just bought the house in, I think it was sometime in 14.
March of 14.
March of 14. So this is like two years, four months of data, and you can see the spike in 2016 June where obviously something was going on in terms of her water usage. So they came out and fixed that pipe in October of 16 after taking the tree out. But from this data, you can see that there was still something else going on in there. What my sister believes is that when they were taking these roots out, that they not only disturbed the pipe that they fixed, but they also disturbed another pipe in there. Because then in March of 17, they noticed that water was pooling on that area where the tree had been taken out, so there was a leak underneath there. And John Henry Plumbing did the repair the second time, and he said that the leak was four feet away from the original repair. And so he said then that would be the property owner's responsibility. However, if you look at this data, she has very consistent usage for a year and four months. It appears to be very logical that when they're down there pulling these roots out in October, that they also disturbed a second pipe that they didn't know they had disturbed until it started, it was obvious it was leaking in March of 17. So she is contesting the bill. It's 1,800 and some cents that she was billed from John Henry Plumbing, and she believes that really is a city responsibility related to the removal of that tree.
Any questions?
So your sister filed a claim with the city for that $1,800 bill that represents the cost from John Henry's?
She communicated with someone from the city council, and they told her they needed to, she could either attend or just let a decision be made, and she would be notified. So she chose to attend. So I don't believe she's filed a claim. She just came to report her case.
I wrote a letter to the city.
She did file a claim, and she is on the list of denied claims.
Okay.
If you're going to talk, we'll need you to come forward, so you can be on the radio cell. Okay.
She just recently had surgery, so.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
Yeah. Carl? According to the claim, I'm getting used to this. The claim's for how much? Does anybody have the paper?
1,008.
But it was filed for an unspecified amount with the city, according to our staff report.
Okay. It looked like it was not for the amount that you had mentioned. Okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, can we have law maybe respond to this?
Do I sit down? You can sit down.
Yeah.
This claim is a little bit complicated from the standpoint, it was actually wastewater that noticed a problem with their roots from the tree getting into their pipe, and so they came out and removed the tree and repaired their issue with the leakage. And at the time they did that, the tree had grown around the stop box, so that had to be replaced as well. And at that time, they discovered a leak that was between the stop box and the house that was repaired. And then it was another leak that was discovered in March after the thaw that was actually between the stop box and the water main that was repaired.
Jeff, could you enlarge that? I'm having trouble seeing. Thank you.
That's just brightness. There we go.
Thank you.
But when you look at this, all of the red, that is the property owner's water pipe. That's her pipe. That's her responsibility. And so any leaks, whether they're on this side or this side, are the property owner's responsibility to repair. And as to the increase in the water bill, the leaks were here and here. The water meter is actually inside the house. And so what you pay is for the water that comes through the water meter. So you could have gallons, hundreds of gallons of water leaking here wouldn't affect your water bill, because that's not water that's going through your meter. And so because the leaks were repaired, were belonging to the property owner, that's why we're recommending the council deny this claim.
Any other questions? Cindy?
Sure. So can you explain then, are you saying this is just coincidence that the water usage was significantly higher prior to the time that the...
Or after?
That the pipes were fixed?
I haven't seen what she's offered to the council. I don't have an explanation for that. I can just tell you that probably was not related to those leaks.
So did your investigation look into water usage at all?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Would you care to come up and have a rebuttal, please?
I do understand what he just explained, because obviously the property owner is responsible at some marking versus the city, but there was no leaks prior to that pipe being disturbed by getting tree roots out. So the cause of the leak is, in my mind, very logically based on them trying to get this 60-year-old huge tree out of the ground. So I do understand it was away from, it was, you know, the picture that he showed, it was on the side for the property, but would have been fine if they hadn't have messed with the pipe. So I don't think it's a property owner's responsibility when it's most likely caused by the work that was done to remove that tree.
I have a question for city law then. This tree, was it in the right-of-way? Who owned the tree?
It's the city tree. It was in the right-of-way.
So it had grown to a place where it disturbed the homeowner's pipes?
Not that we know of. It was disturbing the wastewater pipes, sewer pipes. That was why the city had to remove the tree. You had roots growing into the wastewater.
So it was our tree, we removed it, did not, there was no cost incurred at that point by the homeowner, correct?
The tree had actually grown around the stop box, which is owned by the property owner, and that had to be repaired. But it was not the city's action that caused the damage to the stop box, it was the tree growth.
Correct. But what I'm asking is, in the removal of the tree and repairing of the stop box, was the homeowner charged any money for that?
We haven't seen any bill from that. I understand it was John Henry that is...
Okay. I'm talking about two different things, I guess.
Yes.
Removing the tree was done by city crews.
Well, yes. The city paid to remove the tree.
And there was no...
No bill from that.
No bill from that to be paid by the homeowner?
No. That was entirely on our dime.
Larry?[1773.83]
So, if we just set water usage aside for a moment because you said that that is not related to the leak?
Yes.
The question becomes, who's responsible for the second repair? And what is your take on whether or not there's a way to determine how that second leak came about? If it was the city's responsibility, would it, if it could be determined that it was the city's fault, would the city then be responsible for it? And is the issue that you can't determine who's, who caused the second leak?
Well, if you have old water pipes, any disturbance in the ground can, can cause the leak to become more noticeable. Don't know if that leak was there for ten years prior to that and was exacerbated when the tree was removed. I don't know there's any way of knowing. We certainly don't have any way of knowing. We had to remove the tree because it was causing damage to city property. I don't think we were negligent removing the tree. And I don't know there's any way of showing that the removal of the tree caused the leaks in the water pipe.
If there was some way to know that the city had caused the damage by removing the tree, at that point, would the city be liable for the second repair?
We didn't take any negligent action that would've caused the damage to the water pipe.
So, even if we knew that it was a leak that occurred based on damage when the tree was removed, because it was not negligently done, the city is not responsible?
I would tell you if we caused damage to somebody's property, even if it was doing something we had to do, which it was in this case, we would pay if we knew that. In this case, we're recommending denial because we can't prove causation.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Sure. Would you just explain, for the property owner's benefit, what options are available to her once this is, if, once this is denied, if we should accept the denial?
Right. It, the denial is an administrative action. She filed a claim, which was proper for to do. If the city council adopts our recommendation, which is denial, then that doesn't, that doesn't preclude her from going to court and trying to show causation and submitting to court whatever evidence she has and asking for full compensation for, for whatever damage that she can show that the city caused to her.
Thank you.
Jane?
I have a question for Ms. Swanson.
Yes, sir.
Did John Henry's give you any indication what they thought the cause of the second leak that they repaired was attributed to?
No. My sister did speak with that company and all that they told her was the same that they had written in the bill. And that was that the second leak was four feet away from the original one. And they did not give any cause for that.
And so, the leak was four feet away from the repair that was done by the city?
The first repair, yes. And then, may I just add something more? Based on what this gentleman said, I do understand that you, you cannot prove that the city caused that, but you can also not prove that the city did not cause that. And if you look at it from a logical perspective, you have this huge tree, you're trying to get pretty good-sized roots out of the ground from this tree. And it's really quite logical that they disturbed more than the first leak that was initially repaired.
Carl?
Yes. And again, as, as our attorney explained, if you do choose to file in court, you know, that's certainly an option. Also, you didn't provide us with any documentation in terms of what the costs or damages were, so that would be important to do.
Oh, the bill?
Okay, any other questions? Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, next item, please.
All right, next is item sixteen, approving the fiscal year 2017 annual action plan, one-year use of funds for HUD entitlement programs using CDBG home and emergency solutions grant funds.
Members of the city council, David Landis, urban development department director, the applicant in this case. We are charged with meeting three goals at the federal level that falls to us since we are given money by the Department of Urban Development, Housing and Urban Development. And those three goals are to spend the money that's given to us to provide decent housing, suitable living environments, and economic opportunities in areas of low and moderate income, or to low and moderate income individuals. We're charged with writing a five-year plan and then an annual update. We wrote that plan four years ago. This is the last of five updates that you've seen in recent years. We spend our money essentially from three sources and then for essentially three purposes. Our three sources are for the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant money, home money, which is essentially housing money, and then some specialized money for emergency solution grants, or ESG. Those are the three sources. The things that we spend the money on are housing programs, community development programs, and homeless programs. There is, in this case, an amendment that we'd like the council to consider at the appropriate time. When we first were charged with starting the process, we had one set of numbers from the federal government as to the number, or the resources that we'd have available to us. They were changed in the middle of the process. And so, what we've done is, we, we wrote it with the original numbers and we now ask that the new numbers be applied. They're modest. There's about a thirty thousand dollars diminution in CDBG. There's about a two and a half thousand dollar increase in the home money. And there is a modest increase in the emergency services money, about eight thousand, eight and a half thousand dollars. This has been standard practice. There was a public process involved. And I must say, this is no page turner. The only expected reader of this document is essentially officials in HUD. It's written in a not particularly reader-friendly manner, and it uses a lot of their language. But it does comport with what HUD expects us to do and the supporting data that goes along with it. Other questions I can answer?
Cindy?
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Landis, I was looking through this, and I know we have an attachment that had some numbers filled in because that was the first, first one I looked at. We didn't have dates and numbers and so forth. And this next one that I have, and I'm looking under paragraph numbered four, and it talks about the opportunity to provide input, which I'm guessing we have to provide that information as part of the application process.
We do.
Okay. And I did notice that the meeting was attended by XX number of people representing XX different neighborhood associations, and I wondered if those were gonna be filled in.
They will be, and in fact, there were three people, which is rare. Because in each of the previous four studies, nobody came to our hearings, even though we publicized them and let them know. The attendees were Brian Sack, Prosper Lincoln, Sean Reba of the south of downtown area, and Amanda Hudgens, who is, or Hudgens, rather, who is an activist in that area. The conversation wasn't about the HUD plan. It was about affordable housing in Lincoln. We had a delightful forty-five minutes that had almost nothing to do with this document, but we exchanged our point of views freely and without ranker.
And I believe those three people you mentioned represented more than just three neighborhoods.
I wouldn't say, they do. Brian represents, he's part of the Prosper Lincoln group.
Yes.
And Amanda is, does have an organization that she's sensitive with. It grew out of the south of downtown neighborhood. And Sean is now the executive director of the community development organization in the south of downtown neighborhood, but he has a long history with Clinton, Malone, and Neighbor Works.
And so, as part of our application, those are the numbers you're gonna plug in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item seventeen, authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract with the construction manager at risk for the four fire and police fire stations funded by the three-year quarter cent sales tax approved by voters in 2015. If there is anybody here to speak, they may do so, but I will note for the public record that this item is going to be withdrawn.
And I assume that's what you're here to talk about, sir?
That's what I'm here to ask you to do, is to withdraw the item from your agenda.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please. Anybody else wanna testify on this? Next item, please.
All right, next is item eighteen, special permit seventeen zero one zero, appeal of Ronald Wilhelm and Herbert J. and Daniel H. Friedman from the Planning Commission's approval of a special permit for an indoor kennel with an outdoor area that permits more than three animals at a time located on property generally located at twenty-two twenty-two North Forty-fourth Street.
Someone here to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Members of the council, my name is Herb Friedman. I appear as a property owner, not as an attorney. And we are appealing a ruling by the Planning Commission authorizing a special permit for what has been referred to as a kennel, but is more properly referred to as a dog park. I wanna start out by showing you just a little bit of what we've got here, the orientation. Is this, how does this work?
Just put it on there and we'll look at it.
Oh, okay. This area here is this dog kennel. I own some property over here. Mr. Wilhelm owns some property over here, and I own some other property over here that you can't see on this. The area that's an issue here is what's called a dog park or dog, it's an outdoor area that's about fifty-two by sixty, fifty by sixty-two, as I understand it. And they propose that they want a special permit to permit thirty dogs in this area outside. Ordinarily, you'd have three dogs. We're concerned very much about the sounds. Mr. Wilhelm, do you have your, bear with me, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a little sound effect. I don't mean to be funny about this, but I think you have to hear this in order to understand what we're talking about. Maybe one.
Dogs, is there?
Maybe ten? Okay, thanks, man. So much for the sound effects, and I wanna show you what...
Did he say maybe seven?
Ten?
Oh, ten, okay.
I can help with that.
They want thirty out there, Ms. Lamb. And this is a diagram, pretty much to, it is to scale. Architect prepared for this. This area right here, where you see these little green things, those are dogs, that's what that looks like in that area. And I submit it's impossible to have thirty dogs in that area without having an awful lot of sound. It's disruptive to the people in that area. And that's why we're here, to ask you folks to take another look at this. This is what it looks like now. Told that there's going to be a fence around there, but the fence hasn't shown up. And they indicate that they wanna open this dog park on July first, which is Saturday. I don't know what they're gonna do because this certainly isn't a place where you can have an indoor dog park at this juncture. I will say that we made an effort after the last hearing to approach the applicants and say, look, let's compromise on this. If you'd agree to fifteen dogs, we might be able to work something out. And we were told nothing. We were, they simply rejected it. So, we're asking the council to take another look at this. I do wanna bring out the fact that we did look at the comprehensive plan. And I have something from the comprehensive plan, a diagram. And this shows where the city wants to develop mixed-use things. And this area that we're talking about is a four-block area that runs from O Street to Q and from Forty-fourth to Forty-sixth. And this particular kennel is right in the middle of this. And...
One minute.
Okay. And this is basically what they wanna do. This is the dog park that they're talking about. And these are large dogs that they've got here. And we just think it, there's the owner with, with his dog. We think that it's a nuisance. It's a difficult thing, and it's make, going to be difficult to develop that area. And Mr. Wilhelm and I and other people have been trying to develop that four-block area. And we think that this is going to be a difficult task, and we ask that you please review this. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, for being here tonight. You mentioned developing in the area, and you mentioned that you are also a property owner. So, can you tell council a little bit about what development plans are potentially in the future for this particular area?
Yes, it's, we've been dealing with a, a local developer. This has been going on now for pretty close to a year. The idea is to have some apartments, an apartment building, and there'll be some retail space and there'll be some office space. We think it'd be really a good thing for that particular area.
And then, as I understand it, you have a office building space over there also, is that correct?
I do. I have two office buildings, Ms. Lamb. One of them is forty-four Forty-fourth O Street, which faces O, and the other one is one forty-six North Forty-sixth, which is a two-story building that basically faces North Forty-sixth Street.
Someone had told me that maybe you were doing some refurbishing of those buildings or planning some kind of redevelopment of those buildings?
Well, no. Actually, what we, what planned on doing, if we can develop this area, is leveling those buildings and building new construction there.
Okay.
That's what the plan was.
And do you feel that this permit allowing thirty dogs is in some way going to interfere with that or could interfere?
Absolutely. I think it's not only interfere with that, but I think it's going to interfere with the possibility of renting space in those buildings now.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Friedman, could you please show them on the map? Help us see where you're talking about on the map.
Sure. Right here, the gold part here is the outdoor, outdoor area. This building over here is mine. I have another one that's over here that you can't see from this. And Mr. Wilhelm owns the green space, it's undeveloped at this juncture. This used to be the area of the sports courts, Ms. Gavin Barrett.
And are the buildings occupied or unoccupied or which?
Our buildings are partially occupied. And I can tell you that nobody contacted us about this before they, we heard about it when we read it in the newspaper, basically. And no one contacted the owners. They didn't contact our tenants. And we were simply told that this is the way it wanted. They wanted to have thirty dogs out there, that they can be out there all day long. And we just think that that is a nuisance, it's right in the middle of this developable area. And we think it's something that we'd ask the council to take another look at.
Look, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, in the staff report, it, from Planning Commission, which spent, I think, quite a bit of time on this, it was, it was stated that the applicant wanted ten to fifteen dogs to be able to be outside at any time, and that the reason they had requested thirty was for two reasons. One, to allow for any crossover so that if, for some reason, when they're taking one group of ten to fifteen dogs out and taking another group in, that they wouldn't be in violation if for a minute they were all out there at the same time. And then, the second reason had to do with special events. You mentioned that you're okay with fifteen. Is, is it the special events that you oppose at this point? Is that what you would like to not have happen?
Well, the problem is the way, the way the permit is listed, they can have thirty dogs out there all during the daytime. There's no indication in this, in this special permit that they're limited. Now, I understand what the owner said, but that isn't what he's, that, that isn't what this is all about. You open this up for dogs out there all day long... You open this up for dogs out there all day long, those dark barking dogs, and you've heard what they sound like. And I don't think anybody would want to live next to that or work next to that. So we're trying to be reasonable about this thing, but we just think dropping this noisy nuisance in the middle of this area is not good for the city, and it's certainly not good for the property owners.
You said "live." Is there residential zoning here?
No. Well, yes, there is, across the street. May have another map. Well, they don't right now. If you go across Forty-Fourth Street, there is a development of apartments. They didn't contact those people either. I'm not speaking on their behalf today. The Schlossbergs from Omaha own that. But we, our council did speak for them before the Planning Commission, and they're opposed to this also.
Okay. But if, for the properties that you're considering redeveloping, was there current zoning?
I wish you hadn't asked that question. It's B, and it's B two, I think.
Okay.
That's a guess. It's a little bit out of my line of operation here.
Right. If you could show me the map, or can you point to where they are on the map?
You found a map.
Ron, you have one?
B three.
B three.
B three, ahah, pardon me. Okay. These are the apartments we were talking about, Ms. Gellerbeard. This is the area we're talking about, in the red area here, you can see, is where they want the, the dog park. You can see, this is one of my buildings. This is another building. This is a dental office. And this is another building we have. So we have two of the buildings in that area. And we're really trying to do something with them and gussy this up a bit. And we're just afraid that this is going to have an adverse impact on that, whether I own it or somebody else owns it. No one's going to move in next to thirty barking dogs.
And just to make sure I understand, so the big blue area is the place where there are apartments already? That's residential, that's, I think, our five, but the blue area closer to the dog park is commercially zoned?
B three.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Friedman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify on this item?
I think Mr. Wilhelm does.
My name is Ron Wilhelm, and I live at thirteen oh one Piper Way, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five two seven. I'm the owner, as you know, of the ground just right east of the dog park area. I've owned this land for about nineteen years, and I feel that this particular area is an area that could be developed for the city to be more than just partial ownerships of four or five different people, but should be brought together for the development of the city. And I think that, like Herb has said, if you've got thirty dogs barking, there's going to be a reasonable assumption that somebody is going to challenge and cause a complaint, a nuisance. And I think that the city then is going to be out there working tremendously at trying to create good neighbors. And I think this is my main issue, is that the permit has all the earmarks of creating a bad neighborhood. And I think, repeat everything what Herb has said, and that's my feeling. Any questions?
Cindy?
Sure. Can you talk, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Wilhelm. Can you talk a little bit about the mixed-use development ideas that, I think you've been working with Greenleaf Properties and with Mr. Friedman and others? Can you tell us a little bit about what the mixed use would involve in that area?
It would be the green spot here, and then Herb's buildings here, and this one here, and this one over here, potentials. You have roughly a good, and these two as well, you have roughly a five-acre plot in there. So all those buildings, over time, would be brought together for a redevelopment project.
That would include, it would include apartments, that's, I think Mr. Friedman mentioned?
Yes, mixed use being like a high-rise, four- or five-story apartment complex with mixed use of businesses below that. And so creating a parking area and a green space area in this area here.
And I think that you brought forward, didn't you, a group of you have a development plan, but it also included the sports court building at one time?
Yes, we did.
And that now, you guys are working on revising that because the building was sold?
Well, that's, it was revised because of Pause for Fun rejecting that offer and prospective ability to join that development. They wanted to go on their own, so it kind of disrupted the whole plan.
Okay. So you're working towards an alternative?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mary?
Is there a plan that's been submitted to planning? Is there any requesting?
Not at this time, that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Jane?
I know that the Planning Commission and the Planning Department had put several conditions on the property. Were you aware of some of the conditions that they had put on? About the screening and the setbacks, and that a handler must be on the premises, on the outside premises, with any of the dogs at all time?
Well, the screening in terms, you're talking the six-foot fence? Well, I think that would keep the dogs maybe corralled, but I doubt that it would do much for noise abatement.
But they also required animals in the outdoor area shall be under supervision of handlers at all times.
And that's a big question right there, I think, that the city has, or at least the animal department has. How many, how many people can handle thirty dogs? I don't know. The current code for three dogs is one handler. I would have, hope to think that they would at least have one handler for thirty dogs.
Other questions?
But I would, I would submit maybe an alternative plan of fifteen with maybe five handlers.
Okay. One question here, do you know, how, can you tell me how many years, how long has the sports courts building and the building to the north, have it been unoccupied?
How long has it been since they have been occupied? I'm going to say six, seven years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Kristy Schwarzkopf Schroff. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I'm also a neighbor. My office is right across Q Street, looking out my window at the building that we're talking about. And we, as a neighbor, are very excited to see the revitalization of this block and of these buildings that have sat empty for five or six years. As you know, all we're asking here is that you affirm what the Planning Commission unanimously voted to send to you, and what the Planning Department recommended with conditions. My client is willing to comply with all of the conditions, and has stated that. And I think part of the reason for the Planning Commission, in fact, this is what they told us, for their unanimous approval, was their impressions with the management plan that we put forward. So, what I'd really like you to do is to hear from Leon Kilmer, the CEO. I will say as background, however, that two years ago, we sought from the city council a change of zone. And it was at that time that we received the change of zone, that we indicated full well what our intention was. So this, we didn't know anything about it, is just not correct. We said we wanted to renovate the building with a dog, an indoor dog park. And my client has invested up to three million dollars in this, and this is a family-owned business, so this is the kind of business that we want to see in an area that needs revitalization. So I'd really like you to hear from Leon Kilmer, who will allay your fears about barking dogs.
Welcome, Mr. Kilmer.
Leon Kilmer, fifteen thirty-one Kingston Road. Good to see you all again. A few things to touch on. We are primarily an indoor dog park. We'll also be doing daycare, boarding, grooming, do-it-yourself grooming, indoor pool, the outdoor pool, dock diving, dog sports, training, and retail. So it's, we're turning the one building that we own of the former sports courts into a thirty thousand square foot facility. On the picture that the gentleman showed was only half of the outdoor area. We are also renovating the pool, which will literally overdouble the area out there. So it's not just for that outdoor park area, it's also so we can use that pool for swimming events, for the dogs, and also for dock diving, which is, if you haven't seen dock diving, it's kind of fun. They run as fast as they can on a dock and jump as far as they can. It's actually pretty cool. So just a few other things. Originally, when we brought this forward, the two opposed to us, they wanted no dogs in the dog park, in the outdoor area. But since the law allows three, they were okay with three. It wasn't until after the unanimous decision that they came to us and said, "All right, now we'll be okay with fifteen," after the Planning Commission saw our plan and agreed with thirty dogs. With the possible building of the development around us, they came to us after we had started demolition work on our building. We gave them two months in order to start moving along with the blighting of the land and getting TIF approval. They were unable to do that. We went through with our construction. It wasn't that we told them no outright. We allowed them two months to try and get what they needed. Otherwise, we would still be on a holding pattern for our, for our business if we had waited for them. With the residential across, yes, I did not attack, talked to the company that oversees them. I talked with the manager on site. They are dog-friendly apartments. They even have an outdoor area themselves for dogs. Also, with the development that they're talking of doing with the residential, they're talking about doing dog-friendly apartments, which means they'll also need an outdoor area. As far as how many handlers per dog, according to Nebraska law, there is none. That's actually something I want to change. It's, I want to, we are modeling after Colorado. Colorado has a law of ten to fifteen dogs per one handler maximum. So if there are thirty dogs out there during an event, there's going to be at least two handlers, but if it's an event, their owners are going to be out there, and we're also going to have about a dozen staff out there. On a daily basis, we're going to have anywhere from ten to fifteen dogs out there on a normal basis, with anywhere from one to two handlers for those dogs. As was supplied to you from the previous hearings was our management of those dogs. Dogs communicate, if you have, if you have dogs, they communicate in two different ways, body language and then barking. A couple of barks is just them being happy and normal. Anything past that is them being stressed, over anxious, and we have outlined steps to remedy that. Separating the dogs, giving them a distraction, to even taking them in if they will not stop barking. We don't want to be an annoyance, we don't want to be a nuisance. Also, around town, there are numerous different facilities similar to us that do daycare and boarding. Woof is right downtown. Camp Bow Wow, down on Fifty-Sixth and Old Cheney Highway Two, right down there. And according to Steve Beal, there's been zero noise complaints in the fifteen years that these places have been in town. Well, Camp Bow Wow's been around for fifteen years or so. But there's been zero noise complaints. So, and these places actually have unlimited amounts. They don't have a restriction on how many dogs they can have outside. So, having, being able to put twenty, thirty, even fifty dogs out there with no noise complaints, I understand their fear. It's something I don't want to, I don't want dogs barking all the time either. But I think we have the management, the training, that will remedy this and take care of their fears.
Questions for Mr. Kilmer? Cindy?
Thank you. Thank you for coming today, Mr. Kilmer. So I know that there's been dog diving competitions out at the Lancaster County Event Center, correct?
Yes.
And they're not, they're not able to do those, or they've chosen not to go there and do those anymore?
Correct. We would be replacing that.
Okay. So I saw a report when we first started having those in Lincoln that said that there were hundreds of people that participated out at the Shields diving event. You, I guess in your testimony in front of the commission, said that you expected only maybe ten or fifteen dogs in any, for lack of a better word, I'll say heat?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. So at this point in time, would, that would be the most that you'd expect to be competing at any one time?
On a normal basis, the owners would keep their dogs inside. They usually put them in a crate or a holding area, and that way the owners can be outside watching them. Some owners with a smaller dog may choose to keep them as a lap dog and watch the rest of the event. And that's why we're, even though it's, we're looking at ten, fifteen, maybe twenty dogs per heat, it's, some of them may want to keep their dog out with them, especially if it's a therapy dog or something like that. So we want to be able to allow them to do that while we're still running our event at full capacity, but we won't just allow the dogs to run around on that.
So at this point in time, somewhere between one and thirty, that I guess the offer's been to compromise at fifteen, and you're not willing to do that?
No. If we have daycare dogs out there and we have someone, and we have people that book for pool time with their dogs, we would have to limit how many dogs we have out for daycare, which means separating up that daycare group. And also for any special events, if people rent out our pool for a birthday party for their dogs, which some may laugh, I do. But, you know, I don't want to restrict them, saying, "I'm sorry, you can only bring fifteen of your friends for this type of thing."
Okay. And just one more question. I want to talk about just basically what you've already, you've already done renovations to the indoor facility, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this doesn't in any way influence whether you are going to go ahead with your indoor facility?
No, no, not at all. And in fact, the outdoor area probably won't even be used for the next two months, as we need to get the outdoor pool done, which is why there's not a fence around there, because we don't want to put up a fence and then tear it down in order to put the, refurbish the pool out back.
Thank you. So could you just?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, then Carl.
Okay. Could you just reiterate your, your policy or plan for, for dogs that are excessive barkers? What does the handler trained to do with that dog?
Absolutely. Well, they're trained in animal behavior through the dog gurus and also a couple other training programs. So they're trained to watch the dogs. They're not going to be sitting there texting on their phone, you know, talking to their girlfriend or boyfriend. They're there to play and interact with the dogs. So it could be as simple as something as walking in between the dogs, separating them, giving them a sight break, which, which can ease attention. We can toss a toy, two different toys. If it's over a toy, we can toss one here, one here, and have them go different directions. If they won't stop barking, we'll just take them inside. Maybe they, maybe they are overheating, maybe they're over anxious, overstressed. We have timeout rooms, and we also have very large boarding suites. Our smallest one's an eight-foot by six-foot suite. So we could take them in there, give them time to cool off, you know, give them water. You know, if it takes an hour or two for them to calm down, then that's, that's how long it takes. We're not going to, we're not going to rush the dog on relaxing, but we aren't going to let them just sit out there and bark for ten, twenty minutes or anything like that.
So if an owner has a dog that is an excessive barker, do they understand that that is your policy, that their dog, even though they may have signed up for this special outdoor time?
Yes.
That unfortunately, their, their dog's behavior doesn't merit that?
Yes, that is part of our, our park and pool policy. So even if the owner is there and their dog is being excessive outside, or even in our indoor parks, we will ask them to take their dog out, unfortunately. But it creates a nuisance, and it can, not just for humans, but it can also be a triggering effect for other dogs also. So we would, that's part of what they sign on the waiver when they come in, is that they will control their dog, along with not just their actions, but also their, their barking and noise.
And those rules are, will be clearly posted by the pool and in the outdoor area so that no one is?
Yes, we will have signage for that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Carl?
Yes. Leon, tell me about the, the events. You know, what, not normal, everyday things, but when you do have more special events?
Right, absolutely.
And how frequently would you have those? What kinds of hours would those be?
The, the events that I know we will have, we will have four dock diving events per year. And those will be held on either a Saturday or a Sunday, or on Saturday and Sunday, depending on how many people come. The first three will just be normal competitions, the The first three will just be normal competitions, the fourth is a national qualifier for the North America diving dogs. So those that win there get to go to the national competition. The other ones, I don't expect more than maybe one or two a month, but it completely depends on our customers and our clients, and how often they want to rent out our pool facility. So there may be three, four months where we have nothing, and there may be a month that we have two or three times that they rented out.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Larry?
So the conditions that planning placed on this include the ability to revoke the special permit if there are repeated violations of the, the noise laws that the public health department has, so are there any other measures that you, you know, would take in, in order to mitigate the possibility of losing that permit, or are you, I guess, even aware that that's?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It's conditional?
Yep. If we have a dog that provides too much of a problem, our first step is to keep them inside at all times, we won't take them outside. We do want to take them outside so they can enjoy the sunshine and the fresh air, just as a human would need to. But if they are, if they are known to be a barker, we won't take them outside. And then we've already, I've talked to Steve numerous times, we're fully aware of what, what it will take and, you know, with the noise complaints and everything, and we will work with animal control in, in any capacity needed, in order to stay within the guidelines and the conditional, conditional clauses.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you. Do you intend to take all, each of your dogs out every day for sunshine?
If it's a good day, yes. But it, they would only be out there for about 20 to 30 minutes at a time for, for the different groups.
And you're planning to house 300 dogs?
At maximum capacity, possibly. But they, not all of them would necessarily go outside, and that's at full capacity, that's not 300 dogs in our indoor dog parks at one time, we actually run our daycare similar to a child's daycare. So they would play for a couple of hours, get an hour, hour and a half of rest, so they have time to calm down, cool off, get some water in the system before they, we would bring them back out. We don't expect to be cycling groups out from 6:00 AM to, well, I guess we can't at 6:00 AM, but 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM or anything by, by any means.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Good evening, council members, my name is Brad Beam, I live at 3710 Woods Avenue. I'm here to speak in favor of the special permit and for Paws for Fun. I live approximately nine blocks from the facility. Let me start by saying that I am a member and attend the Witherby Neighborhood Association meetings. Witherby is one of the four neighborhood associations that was given notice on this permit, and at our June 1st meeting, we talked about it, we did not take formal action, but I did talk with Rick Bagby, who is our chair of our government relations committee, and he authorized me to state that my obs, my observation, that no one expressed any concern or shared any objection, all the discussion was favorable, and it centered on the need for this kind of facility in our area of town. And again, just, just so you know, Witherby is defined as 33rd to 56th O. to Randolph. With that said, I'd like to give you my special, or my, my personal remarks. I am very active in animal welfare issues. Council, is that mine already?
No, you're, you're good.
Okay, all right, all right. I was going to say, Councilmember Christiansen, as a member of the Dog Use Facilities Master Plan Committee, you may remember that I presented information related to a commercial, non-city-owned dog park in Austin, Texas. I told the committee that commercial dog parks are finding favor in dog-friendly cities like Austin and Seattle. Tonight's discussion focuses on a commercial dog park facility, in fact, that will be the first indoor facility in the state of Nebraska. Why is this needed? First, it has an indoor component. Second, Lincoln residents will have an alternative to the city dog parks. At Paws for Fun, an owner will know that participating dogs are current on vaccinations, and there will also be a mechanism in place for behavior. That doesn't happen at the city-run dog parks, so there are people who will find this an attractive opportunity. Playgroups will be supervised. In Austin, employees who run playgroups are called Bark Rangers, and I find that very interesting, I'm interested in Mr. Kilmer if he's going to name his employees something similar to that. But again, there's an important safety function here that does not exist at the city-run dog parks. In addition to the dog park facet, Paws for Fun will provide training, they're going to provide grooming, and the issue there is they're going to provide an opportunity for do it yourself grooming. With the full understanding that all the city council members have interests in all part of the city, I have noticed from time to time that Councilmember Lamb has extra, extra compassion for Northeast Lincoln. While, again, while this project is important to everybody, and in, and Councilmember Lamb in particular, Northeast Lincoln is void of the services that are offered by Paws for Fun. There is only one boarding facility north, in the north part of town, and that is Northwest Lincoln. Several boarding facilities are located in South Lincoln. There are no do it yourself grooming facilities in North Lincoln, there are several in South Lincoln. Paws for Fun will address the needs in the north part of town. Further justification for this special permit is found in the City of Lincoln's Dog Use Facilities Master Plan Final Report of February 2016. I provided you a page from the introduction of that report. I'm going to read a few things. An emerging trend in Lincoln and across the United States is the desire to recreate with their dogs in unprecedented numbers. This challenge is most evident for Lincoln residents downtown and in Northeast Lincoln. According to the Trust for Public Lands rankings, Lincoln ranks low compared to similarly-sized US cities for the number of dog parks per 100,000 residents. You have recently addressed this issue by investing in two more dog parks, and that is great, and I want to thank you for that. But that will not take care of the full need that exists in the city of Lincoln, and I'll add to you, add to that, that the Mahoney Dog Run isn't going to even be completed until spring of next year. It's my hope that you will go ahead and approve this, because it's going to provide an opportunity to address various needs in the city of Lincoln as it relates to our animals. And I live close enough that I drive by this almost every day, I usually go up O Street to 44th, over to the credit union and such. I've lived there for three years, and this is the first attempt by anybody to improve the ISO that exists there. And the sports courts has been in ISO for a number of years, so I want to applaud Paws for Fun for spending the money to improve something that's going to help my neighborhood, which I'm pretty close, so, thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please call the next item.
Oh, could we get some staff questions, sorry?
Okay, go ahead.
Steve?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, we also have Steve Beal with Health Department, Animal Control, depending on which Steve you wanted.
All good. You know, we've, we've heard tonight about maybe some interest in limiting the number of dogs that are allowed outside, we, we also have in the staff report that some questions were asked by planning commissioners, can you give us the city's take on the feasibility of doing that, and can you help summarize the conclusions that have been come to at Planning Commission on the issue of number of dogs, noise, maybe you can speak to that so that we have the same information on the, on the record?
Sure, I'll, I'll just start with the general overall, what is in, in front of you, and I'll have Steve then address more the noise complaint part of it. Rather, it was 15 dogs or 30 dogs, when we were reviewing this, we first started asking the Health Department, was this something that they were generally having concerns with throughout the city? Do they have any information on the difference between 10 dogs barking, or 20, or 30? And there was really not a lot of specific information that you could find that way, nor had there been a lot of concerns. So we were willing to say, this particular application could go up to 30, but with a specific condition in it, that if there are multiple violations of the noise ordinance, which would be handled by the Health Department, that that would be grounds then for revoking the special permit. In other words, it could proceed forward if it was approved by Planning Commissioner, in this case, City Council, but ultimately became an issue because of actual violations of, of the noise, then it would come back to you to have that revoked, they could continue with their kennel with three dogs, but they would then lose the right to have up to 30. So we thought, and the Planning Commission agreed, that with that condition, it was appropriate for approval, particularly given this particular property is zoned B3. Most of the surrounding property still has the H2 zoning, which this site previously had. The H2 is a highway commercial use, there is a gas station with a car wash just to the south of this property, there is a Taco Bell all night typically, late night fast food restaurant with the drive-through, so it is characteristic of an H2 or even a B3 zoning district, that you'll have uses that sometimes make noise, doesn't mean they're allowed to violate the noise ordinance, but certainly with things with car washes and auto repair and Jiffy Lubs and those type of things, they do during business hours make noise. And so, given that, we thought it was appropriate that, since it was not going to be close to residential, it's 275 feet from the outdoor dog area to the apartment complex to the west, and the building is in between the two, that this was an appropriate location for a special permit. Steve could address more the process of how a complaint would be handled.
Before we do that, can, you, you mentioned distance to residential, and there's also some discussion tonight about the possibility of redevelopment closer to this particular kennel. Can you speak to that issue, and, and what we should be thinking about as we consider the possibility of future development?
Sure. Nothing has been filed on this particular property or in the area around it, so it still remains H zoning, which currently doesn't allow residential uses, but certainly as our comprehensive plan, as the, as the one gentleman noted, does encourage a mix of uses in areas. But one thing that we note even in the downtown is that when you're in a mixed-use area, there should be some anticipation that there is going to continue to be noise around you. When you live in the downtown, as I think some of you can attest, there are sometimes late night noise, doesn't mean that it gets to be excessive noise, but when you're living in a mix of an area, that often comes with it. And so very much like the apartments to, to the west, have to know that they're near a commercial area, that's not a, an uncommon event to have residential in fairly close proximity to commercial uses, and it's still be very successful.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Yeah. Thinking to the future, if the development, if there is development to the east, where the building is not in between, if there's development to the east and there's residential going in there and they needed to change the zoning, would the fact that there were, this permit had been issued, would that interfere with their right to change the zoning, or their ability to change the zoning?
No, it wouldn't interfere with their right to come forward with a zoning application. We would certainly look at any application for residential to see, how does that fit within the area? How does it fit within the convenience store to the south or the fast food restaurant? But particularly since the residential would be coming after the fact, it's with the idea that the investor in that building knows, well, I, I'm in a mixed-use area, there's a lot of other commercial uses, so when I'm orienting my residential, I have to take that into account that I am surrounded by other residential, or other commercial uses. So it would not be something that would prohibit them from coming forward with a, a mixed use. We would probably unlikely rezone the adjacent property to just R residential, it would probably be some type of a commercial district that would allow a first floor commercial use, but also allow residential above, which is allowed in the B3 zoning, which is the kennel is at.
And I'm sorry, maybe I worded that less articulately than I should have. So, right now, if there was residential zoning to the east, then would that outdoor dog area where the permit has been granted be too close to be granted?
Correct, if there was R zoning immediately adjacent to the east, it's supposed to be 200 feet away, so it would be literally adjacent. Their alternative would be to come through a special permit process, very much like you need a special permit to have more than three dogs outside, you need a special permit if you're going to be within 200 feet of residential.
Okay, and so then I guess I'm flipping it, I'm saying, okay, now the dogs are there?
First.
So if someone wants to come forward with some type of zoning, would that interfere with their ability to be zoned, since now we have the dogs there?
No, it wouldn't prohibit you from changing the zoning to, for instance, B3, which would allow a mix of residential uses, and if it's zoned B3, that would allow apartments above, that doesn't prohibit at all, doesn't interfere with the conditional use. You have to be 200 feet away from R zoning, which is basically meant for residential alone. If you're going to redevelop the property, you really wouldn't use R zoning, you'd use some type of a zoning that allows a mix of uses, so you could have a, a first floor dry cleaner or a restaurant, or an office use and the, and the residential above. That's typically what we see in those kind of mixed use, is they go for some kind of a commercial zoning that also allows residential.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Steve Beal, I'm with Lincoln Animal Control, I'm the manager there. And our role and responsibility would be enforcement of the part of the municipal code that deals with animals, more specifically animal noise in this case. And the way we deal with that is pretty straightforward, if we receive a complaint, and a lot is driven on a complaint basis, or we become aware of it because we observed it as we were patrolling or something like that, we would send the letter to, in this case, to the owner of the facility, indicating that we received a complaint, and that they have 10 days to remedy the situation, in this case, if it was barking dogs. We then follow up with that, or if it appears after 10 days, we, we receive another complaint, or an animal control officer observes a violation, at that point, usually a visit to the, by an animal control officer, or a phone call from myself to, in, the owner or neighbor, if that's the case, is made, and, and if, if there's a plan, or it seems reasonable that this is going to get remedied, then we continue to monitor it. If we continue to see a violation, at that point, or an officer observes a violation, they can write a citation for the noise violation, at which point, the, the individual that receives the citation may be fined in, in that case. We keep track of all this in our dispatch system, so we have a record of all the complaints from anybody that might make one, and, and that's pretty much how we deal in, in a nutshell with noise complaints.
Questions? I have a question.
Yes.
So, when, when you have a noise complaint, do you actually measure the amount of noise? Do you have to observe it yourselves, or just?
We don't measure it to answer that question with a decibel meter or anything like that. You know, there's no, there's no number that's been established in code or municipal code or anything like that, that says if it exceeds some number of decibels, then it's violation of code, to my understanding, and I defer to law if I'm wrong about that. But what, what we do do is, under the animal noise part of the ordinance, is it talks about excessive barking, and, in the case of dogs barking, and we know dogs are going to bark at certain things, we know they're going to bark for reasons, you know, if you own one yourself, if somebody's walking by, or this or that. So there's a, you know, we want to be reasonable in terms of recognizing that. So the excessive, really, what we're looking for is excessive continued noise that is disturbing the peace, basically, and then at that point, we would intervene.
Other questions?
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Sure.
So I was reading of your testimony at the Planning Commission, and they were talking about, asking about revocation of some type of a, of a special permit like this, and you had indicated, I think, that it was extremely rare, and not, not at all easy.
I would defer to Steve on the revocation.
Oh, okay, was that you? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. So there is a process for revoking a special permit, so that there would be two separate processes, there would be the Health Department for your complaint about the barking dogs, and then ultimately, if there was enough complaints, it would be the Building and Safety Department, in consultation with the Planning Department, would decide, it looks like it can't be remedied, it's an ongoing issue, and it would be then scheduled for the City Council to revoke the special permit. And of course, then there would be a hearing for both sides, again, to, to present their case before you made your decision. And, and yes, that is extremely rare, I've worked for the City Planning Department for 28 years, Rick Peo has been even longer than I have, and neither one of us could remember an actual revocation that went forward to the City Council. There's been a few times where it has been discussed, and, but typically, the discussion of the revocation usually led an owner to make some change, and it was resolved without having to come forward to the City Council. So you have that ability to do it, it is just something that is quite rare and actually happening.
So I'm kind of reminded of what we talked about a few weeks ago with regards to these parking setbacks for car lots? to these parking setbacks for car lots that they weren't really enforced, and part of the problem was that they could, whenever there was a violation, they could be moved in order to change the circumstances, and I'm thinking of the same thing with dogs, that y- you're describing the same type of, uh, process where an owner is notified and then they, you know, have to somehow alleviate the situation, but if dogs can be moved in and out, then that seems like similar to the cars that can be moved back and forth and makes enforcement and even what you guys are doing, um, difficult. And then I also heard you say there really is no, n- n- no measurement, so are, disturbing the peace is a pretty low threshold? Is that true of, for, um, excessive barking also?
Um, it depends upon, I guess, you know, in this case where we're talking about a commercial boarding kennel, uh, and a number of dogs that we're talking about, um, uh, the threshold's going to be basically determined by what people will put up with. And so if, if it becomes to the, comes to the point where they call us and file a complaint, we're going to investigate it, and we're going to follow up with that until, um, such time that either it's remedied or goes beyond animal control to some others.
Let me just follow up again, just to make sure. So when you get a complaint, you would go out and you, one of your staff would have to actually observe the barking before they, they would take action? Is that correct? Or do you just take people's word that, yeah, there was barking going on before you got that?
That's certainly one way. I- if an animal control officer believes there to be excessive barking and a violation of Lincoln Municipal Code, they can write a citation for a violation of that at that time. If other documentations brought forward to animal control, for example, a noise log that somebody might keep, again, you know, that becomes a little more subjective because then again, you know, that's not us observing that directly, but however, it does become part of the process and, and trying to document whether or not there's an ongoing issue with animal noise at that location. So we have used those before, um, and, and at that point, they may become documentation in the event that it's litigated.
Okay. Other questions? I have one comment I want to make about noise and dogs, and I'll put on my professional hat for a moment. Um, let's say for exam- example, you had a dog barking at 80 decibels, and you added a second dog barking at 80 decibels. It's not 160, it's about 82 or 83 decibels. It's a logarithmic scale that also obeys the law of diminishing return, so if we were measuring with a sound level meter, the decibel level, it would be almost practically indistinguishable between 10 dogs and 30 dogs, the total noise level in decibels. So that's just the way it works, just for your information of the council members, so.
Very good.
All right, any other questions?
Can I, I'm sorry. I want to ask, I just want to clarify that this, um, special permit doesn't have anything to do with whether the dog park, indoor dog park goes forward, correct?
That is correct, that is, uh, an allowed use. The only limitation was having no more than three dogs outside at any one time.
Okay, and now they're asking for 30?
Correct.
Okay. And the, um, I believe that why, when I talked with planning, the indication was, boy, it would be nice if they could do some kind of, um, negotiation for more than three and less than 30.
Uh, certainly at the Planning Commission level, that was encouraged to see if there was something that could be worked out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Other, other staff questions? Next item, please. Well, we.
A rebuttal.
Okay.
If I could, uh, regarding the decibel level, I think, you know, uh, respective of what you said, if you got 30 dogs, it would seem like you would have more of a continuous decibel level.
Right, it would be steadier.
It'd be more steady.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're looking at seven o'clock in the morning till 10 at night?
That's assuming they were all barking constantly.
Yep.
They might die before they, you know, bark that long.
Or turn off the hearing aid.
Okay, turn off the hearing aid, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
All right, next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call items 19 through 22 together. They are Comp Plan Conformance 17008, approving an amendment to the capital improvement program to amend Public Works and Utilities Project Number 0048, Water Distribution Maines, Area 6, Rockabye Road, 84th Street to 91st Street, to extend the project boundary from 91st to 94th Street, designate the project for construction in fiscal year 1617, designate LES as the funding source and appropriate the LES fundings in fiscal year 1617. Comp Plan Amendment 17002, amending the 2040 Comp Plan by expanding future service limit to include the proposed Lincoln Electric System Southeast Service Center site on property at South 91st and Rockabye Road, and to move the site from Tier 3 to Tier 1B Priority Growth Area. Annexation 17004, annexing approximately 283.79 acres at South 91st and Rockabye, and a memorandum of understanding between the city and LES regarding LES's agreement to pay the cost to obtain Rural Water District Number 1, Lancaster County's release of the properties being annexed by the city located within the RWD boundaries relating to the new LES operating center at South 98th and Rockabye Road.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bragman with Olson Associates, 601 P Street. We are here representing the client, LA, uh, Lincoln Electric System. With me this evening are representatives from LES, including LES's CEO, Kevin Wales, as well as some other members of our project team. As you are aware, LES is in the process of building a second service center at South 94th Street and Rockabye Road. The second location is important to the community for several reasons. It mitigates the risk of having a current service center in the floodplain, and also mitigates an even greater risk of only having one location that houses all their equipment and field personnel. A second, a single event similar to, uh, the Joplin tornado could cripple LES's ability to respond to the needs and get the lights back on. The second location also keeps LES's response times shorter and meets the needs of the growing service territory. The four items before you this evening are part of a package. The annexation application, which also then allows for the construction and, of the proposed water main, the MOU, which lays out that LES is covering the costs associated with the annexation and the main, and the final, and finally, the comprehensive plan amendment that expands the future service limits to include the LES property. We have been working closely with the Planning Department and Lincoln Water staff on the four items before you this evening. We want to express our appreciation for their guidance and assistance with this process, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on these items?
Richard, SGL 733 West Cummings Street. I have a question as to the cost for this improvement, and I want to know the cost for the infrastructure, and how much is covered by the property owners by impact fees? Because it's going to expand the cost to the city.
Okay. We have these people coming forward who will answer those questions. Is it familiar face?
Good evening, council. My name is Trish Owen, I'm Vice President and Corporate Operations for LES, 2620 Fairfield Street.
Kevin Wales, CEO of LES, 1040 O Street.
So the questions were on the cost of the infrastructure. Uh, Lincoln Water System on the water main has not yet bid out that, uh, water main, but I believe the estimate from Lincoln Water was in the $695,000 range. Uh, the other infrastructure that was put in, uh, was a road from 84th Street to 98th Street by Lancaster County. Uh, LES is reimbursing them for those costs, and that was about 2.8 million, a little bit more when you include some of LES's costs. And then the cost for this Phase 1, the operation center, is, uh, total cost, soft and hard construction costs, uh, 60 million.
And again, just to be clear, who is paying those costs?
Uh, LES.
Okay. Other questions? Cindy?
So I think his question was whether any impact fees that were being used, one of his questions.
No, ma'am, no impact fees at all.
Because those costs are being covered, so.
Mm-hmm.
By who?
Those costs are covered by LES, correct?
Where do they get their money?
From our, from our customers. Obviously, it's part, as part of our, our capital improvement plan.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, next item, please.
Oh, forget it. Just one clarification that, that was in our staff report, but I don't think we had made clear on our fact sheet. You have four items before you today. Uh, we are asking that, uh, next week when you vote on these, that the annexation item itself, just the physical annexation, uh, be delayed to your first meeting in November. Uh, this is being done because there is a private property owner who is in between the city limits and the LES service center. Uh, that private property owner is participating in the annexation, uh, but there would be a tax implication to them if it occurred during this tax year. So if the annexation occurs, um, in, after basically November 1st, uh, it delays their, their tax imp- implication, uh, and it also works fine with LES in terms of being provided with the water service. Uh, so you will have, i- if you decide to go ahead and approve the memorandum of understanding of the other items, it gives them the certainty that those items, um, are acceptable to the city, and we just delay the actual annexation till the, the first meeting in, uh, November.
And that would be for action only in November?
Uh, for action only, yes. There wouldn't be any reason for any additional hearing at that point. So we just ask that you put that item on pending to date certain to whatever that first Monday is in November.
6th.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Item, item 15, accepting the report of doing pending claims against the city for the period of June 1st through the 15th, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Any discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Item 16 is approving the fiscal year 2017 Annual Action Plan for HUD, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Discussion?
We do have a motion to amend Number 1 on this one to accept a substitute action plan.
I would make that motion, and the substitute, uh, plan just changes some of the figures as Mr. Landis pointed out.
Second?
Okay, so amendment moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion on the amendment. Please call the roll on the amendment.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Now on the main motion.
I'm sorry, 6 to 0.
Excellent.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next then is item 17, the multi-year contract for the police stations. This one, we did have the request to withdraw.
May, I'll make a motion to withdraw that.
Second.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next is item 18, Special Permit 17010, this is the appeal, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Carl. Uh, discussion?
Thank you, yes. I am excited about this use, uh, in, in Northeast Lincoln, and so I appreciate them bringing that to my, uh, attention. I am, however, concerned about the, uh, number of dogs that are going to be allowed, um, in the outdoor area, and I just wanted to be clear that, and that's why I asked the question, is that this has to do with just the outdoor portion of the special permit. This doesn't in any way interfere with this business going forward and this dog park, which has already been invested in and, um, uh, being made available for the people in, in Lincoln, um, and in Northeast Lincoln in particular. I would like to make a motion to, uh, to change, a motion to amend the, uh, resolution. Line 13, uh, says it permits and approves a kennel with an allowance for up to 30 animals in the outdoor area at any one time between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM, 10:00 PM only. I would like to amend that to 15 animals. I'm glad that the, uh, parties did at least try to do some type of, um, negotiations, and I think we, we heard here today and is also evident in the, um, in the commission hearing, that the, um, folks expect even during these events, that there would be 10 to 15 dogs at a time participating actually in the dog dive, and so I think that 15 is a reasonable number, um, and, uh, would alleviate evidently the concerns of the surrounding property owners. I'm extremely, um, concerned about a mixed-use going forward with dogs barking outside. I mean, I don't, I don't know that, um, we can really recognize how that might be if we were living in a second or third floor apartment. I don't think the six-foot wall, or six-foot fence, I'm sorry, is going to diffuse that particular sound, so I am concerned enough about that, but I understand them wanting to do these particular events, and I think they sound like a blast. Um, I think there's going to be a lot of people there, and the events draw as many as 100 people, but he said he's going to keep his participation to 10 or 15 per heat, and so I think that 15 would be reasonable. So I would make a motion to, uh, amend, to say the permit approves a kennel with an allowance for up to 15 animals in the outdoor area.
Cindy, if I may clarify, on the resolution, line 13 does not have the figure.
Page 2, line 13, sorry.
Okay, um, but then also on page 1, it has it in various locations, um, like line 2. So do you want to just?
Yeah, my motion would be to anywhere it says 30 animals to amend it to say up to 15.
Very good, thank you.
Is there a second? Seeing no second? Motion fails.
Thank you, council members.
Um, let me just say, I will comment on that, that before this meeting, I was willing to go along with that, but after hearing the, the plan that, uh, the pause for fund has in place, I think it's reasonable, as well as the contingency to, uh, remove their special permit if the situation demands, seems reasonable. So on the main motion, please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Excuse me, can we have discussion on the main motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd like to, to clarify, or you can?
Yeah, Cindy has any.
Yes, thank you, okay. So, um, I'm concerned too that this is going to set a stage for bickering among neighbors, it's going to invite complaints. We've heard that it's only going to come before us in the event there's a number of complaints issued. I know that the Lincoln Police Department no longer goes out on dog barking complaints, so it will all fall to the Health Department. Um, and I don't know that people know to call the Health Department if they have a dog bark complaint, so, um, I'm concerned about that, and, um, I, I am so disappointed that no one even seconded my motion. Um, this is in my district, and it seems like Northeast Lincoln is once again, nobody wants to pay attention to what's good for Northeast Lincoln residents, and we're talking about potential multi-use, uh, buildings going up in Northeast Lincoln to benefit the people of Northeast Lincoln, and to put 30 barking dogs ahead of that is really, it just offends me tremendously, and, um, and I just am, can't even tell you how disappointed I am that no one supported that amendment, so, but I will not support this resolution.
Okay. Other comments? We have a staff question.
I have a question for Jeff. So Jeff, this is an appeal.
Yes.
So when it comes time to vote on this, if we vote in favor, that means we are supporting the appeal.
No, the fact that it is an appeal does not change it. Just think of it as an application. The appeal, the, the, what the appeal did, right, it before you, otherwise, the Planning Commission would have handled it. And so just regard it as an application. If you're in favor of the application with the special use, you vote yes. If you're opposed to the application, then you vote no.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I too am going to support, um, this special permit because I think the business operators have a good plan. I think they understand the implication of, of allowing dogs to have excessive barking. And that would be to the detriment of part of their business plan and, and a detriment to the enjoyment of the dogs that, uh, love to have that opportunity to go outside and come back inside. So I think, um, it's, it's something very unique for the city of Lincoln and for the state of Nebraska. And I think this is hopefully a, a good role model for other opportunities throughout the state of Nebraska. Um, as a dog owner and dog lover, and, uh, my dogs do bark, but I think of all the neighbors that surround me that have dogs. And their, their dogs bark, and it seems like we can always work through these issues. And we are, are trying to be respectful of our neighbors to make sure that no one's dogs or dogs have excessive barking. And I think as a business operator, they have a lot more at stake.
Carl?
Thank you. I remember when the applicant came here, uh, a couple, two or three years ago, remember that well. And this was something we, um, approved at that time. And, and in the meantime, while we've been waiting, this, you know, the areas continued to deteriorate. And, um, there have been opportunities for redevelopment, and, uh, nothing else has, has come forth. And I, I get, I completely get the, the conflicts of mixed-use developments. I, you know, kind of live with it every day. But it's, um, uh, first in, I think, is, is what we've got here. We've got a, you know, a business that's wanting to enter, and, and they're ready, and they've been approved by the planning commission. And I don't see, uh, that it's fair to, to somehow, uh, limit their opportunities based upon, uh, a, a maybe.
Other comments, Larry?
Would just add that, that mixed-use development is still allowed and possible to come forward. Uh, this in no way stops that from happening. It, um, it is still very much an area that's ripe for future development. And this, you know, this, the success of this business may even enhance the opportunities for additional development. And I think it was helpful to hear in the staff report, the, um, the amount of investigation that was done by the planning commission and the planning department into how, uh, to ensure that there was recourse if for some reason there were problems. And, um, one of the commissioners said that the barking can be turned on and off actually by the handlers. And I think we heard tonight that if there was excessive barking, that dog would be taking, taken inside. Uh, it certainly isn't good for their business if there are, is if there's excessive noise or potential for nuisance complaints. Uh, because I think the neighbors will very much be on high alert. So, uh, I very much appreciate the, the plan that, that the current business owner has in place to pro- proactively prevent that kind of a conflict from occurring. Um, and then again, you know, if for some reason the current owner doesn't do a good job, there is the possibility of revoking this special permit that allows the thirty dogs. And it would go back to the three that are allowed by right. So I'm willing to give it a chance and see how it goes, and, um, I'll support the, the application.
Okay, other comments? I would like to say that many times this council has seen similar situations come forward where a piece of property has been for sale for quite some time. Nobody buys it, and finally someone buys it with a good idea and puts a lot of money into it. And then somebody else says, well, we wish we could have used it for some, another purpose. But if they really felt that way, they could have purchased it themselves. And I think there is some respect that is due to the entrepreneur who sticks his neck out. So I will support this, uh, because I think you have shown that you're serious about this. So please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Five to one.
Five to one, yes.
Next, our public hearing ordinance is second reading, our items nineteen through twenty-two. We have no ordinances on third reading. Our resolutions first reading are items twenty-three through twenty-seven. And our ordinances first reading are items twenty-eight through thirty.
Okay.
Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time.
Were those of you who would like to testify tonight, please just come up forward and sit on the front row so we can get you right up here and speak as soon as someone vacates the microphone, so.
Thank you.
And like all the other, please just state your name.
Richard Eskival, seven thirty-three West Cummings Street. I guess we can officially say that this council has gone to the dogs tonight. So, um, my councilman is Mr. Eskridge, and I wish he would show this whenever this information is brought up. I have been up here numerous times on the use of TIF funding. This is not for a specific project. This is just an explanation of how it costs a taxpayer. Uh, I'm using example that the city council, the mayor, and Dave Landis has given their blessing to give some money, like thirteen million dollars to a specific project. At today's tax rate is two dollars, three point six, seven, five, eight cents per hundred dollars. Now, to explain TIF, if the property is valued currently at six million dollars, the city will continue to apply the, the taxes to the city schools and county. But if we give the thirteen million dollars and the project becomes valued at ninety-five million dollars, that means for fifteen years, anything above that six million dollar figure is gonna be used to pay back TIF. So I couldn't find out what the cost is. I know that the person requesting the TIF has to supply bond to cover the TIF amount. Uh, but a bank has to issue that money based on the bond. And I know the bank's not giving it away for free. I could not find out the interest rate for a project such as this, so I use four percent. And based on a four percent rate over thirteen years, and I use thirteen instead of fifteen because it's gonna take a couple of years to complete the project. And over that thirteen-year period, that means that through the tax increment financing, we're gonna probably have to pay a bank anywhere approximately eight million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over thirteen years. Because this TIF money is given to this person. So if the present property value is six million dollars, they're paying approximately a hundred, one thousand, five hundred dollars a year in tax. But if it goes up to that ninety-five million dollars, that means the difference between the six million and the ninety-five million, or eighty-nine million dollars, all the taxes on that for the city, county, and schools goes to repay the TIF money, thirteen million dollars. Well, based on our current tax rate, and I use eighty-nine million dollars as an increase in value, that means the property tax is gonna be approximately one point eight, one, five million dollars a year. So, we know the project's good for fifteen years. I've been here a long time, and I know that if the TIF money is paid off sooner, the city council says, hey, let's use the rest of this money for another fifteen years for another project. So would the city council release the additional funds once the fifteen million, thirteen million dollars is paid off? I doubt it. You know, they have pet projects. So the property tax value left, lost to the citizens of Nebraska, uh, Lincoln over that thirteen-year period, it amounted to twenty-three point six million dollars based on the tax revenue. So if you add the lost amount of money for financing the original thirteen million and the loss of tax revenue, it costs the Lincoln taxpayers approximately thirty-two point three, five million dollars over that fifteen-year period. Now you're gonna say it costs us nothing. Well, where's that money coming from? If it's not going to the city, not going to the county, not going to schools, they still need money.
One minute.
Okay, so therefore, it is costing the taxpayers. That's just like the question I asked LES this morning, today. Who's paying for this additional property? He said customers. Well, I'm a customer. How's that benefit me? You know, it doesn't benefit me at all. It's costing me. So that's just like this TIF. How much is it costing everyone? Well, it's costing all of us approximately thirty point, thirty-two point three, five million dollars over fifteen years. Because that money, if it's refunded by the state for the schools, it's still coming out of my left pocket instead of my right pocket. So TIF does cost a significant amount of money. And Carl, I'd appreciate it if you let people know this because I don't think it's ever been explained like I've explained it here. Thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you, sir. Next person? Please don't forget to sign in.
Sure. Thank you, council members, for your interest in the Costco chicken plant and your commitment to the citizens of Lincoln. My name is Mary Pfeiffer. I've lived in Lincoln since nineteen seventy-two, when I came here for graduate school. My current address is thirty-one fifty South Fifty-Eighth Street. I've been looking, uh, into this Costco plant with a group of people who are here tonight for over eight months. We've educated ourselves in nitrates, poultry-born diseases, groundwater, and chicken poop. All of this, by the way, has been heavy lifting for me. These are not my particular areas of interest. I'm not a scientist, but I've learned a great deal from this research, which I would like to share with you. A brief overview of the situation is this. With no citizen approval nor any kind of environmental impact study, the mayor and city council of Fremont voted to allow a Georgia-owned Costco poultry processing plant, um, to, uh, be built south of town. Lincoln's wellheads for, um, our, our wellheads are twenty-five miles down river from this proposed plant. This operation will include a feed mill, hatcheries, and four hundred new chicken barns spread across eleven counties and housing forty-three thousand birds in each barn. Costco will manage seventeen million chickens at a time and process approximately three hundred and fifty thousand chickens every day. We've never experienced anything like this on a scale in, uh, Nebraska. The John Hopkins Center has calculated this plant will generate roughly four million pounds of waste per day, which is twice the amount of waste from the entire city of Omaha. The waste will include blood, flesh, feathers, excrement, carcasses, phosphates, growth hormones, fecal coliforms, and nitrates. Also, there will be a significant increase in arsenic. These chemicals cause cancer as well as neurological, liver, and thyroid damage. Southeast Nebraska already is the worst area in the nation for Parkinson's disease. And we will see more of this sad disease if this Costco is built. I've had discussions with two people from out of state that are relevant to our situation. And by the way, anyone I mention, I can provide a phone number so that anyone on the council can have a discussion with them as well. I spoke to Senator David Johnson. He's from, uh, the northwest Iowa region. He's been a senator for nineteen years. All of it has been served on a committee that regulates livestock in the state of Iowa. He is now interested in helping us learn from Iowa's mistakes. His quote to me was, "We learn the hard way." One-fifth of all Iowa citizens now require water that is treated by a denitrification plant, and this is an expensive process. The cost of the denitrification is added to customers' utility bills. He's also very worried about the impact of Costco on our water supplies. His quote on that is, "There is a way to regulate, uh, animal confinement areas, but Nebraska is not doing it. It doesn't have adequate environmental standards, rules, processes, or monitoring." I also, also talked to a man named Stu- Stuart Taylor of Elka, North Carolina, population four thousand. And I, I contacted him because his area has two counties that have had a great deal of experience with chicken processing plants.
One minute.
Oh, he's from a county where Pilot Mountain State Park exists. They had three small chicken barns that were ruining the, um, experience in the, uh, park. Uh, fewer visitors were coming, and neighbors were losing, uh, quality of their lives. So that county organized to fight it and is once again healthy and busy. Next door in, um, Wilkes-Barre County, um, allergies and astmas are up. He said the county had been ruined. A woman has died from a heart attack from pollution related to poultry-born asthma. The operators are over a barrel and unhappy. And, um, property values have plummeted by fifty percent. One farmer said, "I would sell the family farm tomorrow if I could find a way to do it, but there are no buyers." The water treatment plant in Wilkes-Barre had been upgraded, uh, by the chicken plant, but couldn't cope. Last week, workers were, uh, dumping untreated wastewater into the river system. Let me just skip quickly to our requests of the city council.
Well, may I ask Mary some things?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mary, can you explain, um, you referenced, uh, well, I have two questions. You, you referenced the, the issues going around, on in North Carolina. What mitigation efforts were put in place once they discovered, uh, some of the, I guess, the, the contamination? Or what steps did that municipality take, or the county take? Or what was the outcome of that, uh, North Carolina example? And then I have a, another question on the reference to Iowa that you made.
Yeah, well, what this county that successfully kept chicken, uh, production out and limited, and especially away from the, the, uh, Pilot Mountain State Park and that very beautiful area, was a negotiation with local poultry producers and a negotiated setback agreement that, that gave a lot more protection to the, uh, people that lived and worked in that area. The other thing, um, was involved in that negotiation was an agreement to not put more pro- poultry processing plants in the area because that county had such a strong negative reaction from its citizens to these plants. So that's what stopped it.
Did, did the property values bounce back up after?
I don't know. I don't know. They were plummeting, but the issue wasn't so much plummeting property values with these three chicken farms. The issue was, there were a lot of acreages, there were a lot of land near the parks. And all of a sudden, nobody liked to go out dives, outdoors anymore. Their, their, their beautiful orchards and vineyards, et cetera, stunk. And, and just really destroyed the quality of life for people in that area.
So were these efforts voluntary efforts, or was it, uh?
They were voluntary efforts by people who were negotiated with by citizens and, uh, legislative and governing bodies in the state. I think if you're more interested in this, the best thing would be to call Stuart. And he's been there, he, there's also a Pigeon Mountain Committee that has fought this. You can check out their website and see exactly what kind of actions they took.
Did you say that they had a, a, a plant, and did they have to upgrade the plant in?
Well, this was in Wilkes-Barre County, next door, where, uh, the plant was upgraded by the chicken processing people. But it was not sufficiently upgraded. So now there's a criminal case against this plant for, um, workers at the, um, municipal, uh, waterworks dumping wastewater directly into rivers in the county.
Can I ask you a question? You referenced Iowa and said one-fifth of all Iowans, um, drink water that is treated by a denitrification plant. Are you, is this referencing the one that's in Des Moines, or?
It's Des Moines, and it's the, the Ketchmon area of Des Moines, which is one-fifth of all the people in the state of Iowa.
So in your research, what has led to, um, I guess, this, uh, denitrification process or the plant, or?
Well, upriver from Des Moines are a lot of, um, animal confinement areas. And right now, um, the city of Iowa is in expensive litigation with three drainage districts for violating, um, agreements with Des Moines about how much wastewater would be dumped, what nitrate levels would be, et cetera. And again, this Senator David Johnson would be a very good person to talk to about this.
Okay, I have a question. You were about to talk about what you would request the council do.
Yes.
Could you review that for us?
I would like to, I would like to do that. Um, we want a decision process on this plan that allows for citizen input, scientific reporting, and independent oversight and monitoring. We want, um, the city of Lincoln on record as opposing this plan. We want the city of Lincoln on record as opposing this plan until fiscal, environmental, and health impact studies can be done. We want an emergency plan for worst-case scenarios in case our drinking water goes on us overnight. And we would like the city of Lincoln to take responsibility, to deal with our legislative system, our regulatory systems, and our governor, to actually enact some kind of process that would allow us to protect the people of our state. In other words, nobody believes this is their responsibility. And we've talked to almost everybody in the state, plat districts, DEQ, governor, legislators, et cetera. And everyone basically says, "We have a narrow mandate. This is not our responsibility." So we are saying, because we know that there are people in the city council very concerned about this, that we would like the city council to step up and say, "We oppose this until there's further study and better regulations in place."
So with, with the exception of the things you specifically asked regarding Lincoln, did you take these, this information request to Fremont and their city council?
No, no, I have not.
Other questions, Mary? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Randy Rupert. I'm with Nebraska Communities United. We were formed a year ago, March.
Randy, could you tell us where you're from?
Fremont, Nebraska. I'm sorry, excuse me. 2108 County Roado, Fremont, Nebraska. We, we were formed because they were going to put this plant in our backyard without ever talking to any of the citizens that would be surrounding it. It soon grew out of anger to the point of us forming this union to bring light to the issue of what CAFOs, Containment Animal Feeding Operations, have done nationwide. We do not feel that Nebraska is really understanding the impacts that the rest of this nation has gone through. In talking with the director from NDEQ, he said, "Well, what am I supposed to do if Costco meets all the criteria? Not issue them a permit?" My question was back, how many permits are we going to issue under the current standards? And then have a crisis on our hands, as in Iowa, as in North Carolina, as in West Virginia, as in Virginia, as in Maryland, as in Texas, as in Arkansas, you name it. Every state that has welcomed industrial ag is now suffering from environmental issues. We have a great state. We have one of the best states in the nation. I've worked in 40 out of the 50. I came home to this state to retire. And so we don't have that luxury anymore of what eight people in Fremont do that will affect 900,000 people. We're all interconnected now. We've got too many, too many people. Our population keeps growing. We keep getting more and more connected. So when somebody does, wants to put a magnitude, a project of this magnitude in place, without talking to Lincoln, without talking to Omaha, without talking to Howells and Dodge and Stanton, we have to say, "Let's stop. Let's take a look at this. Let's look at, let's look at the issues here." Your water, Omaha's water, is going to come out of waters that are already, at certain times, up to over four, four and a half, five percent parts per million nitrogen. The Elkhorn River, a month ago, was shut down for public use because of high nitrate levels. Leoma Beach in Omaha was shut down for blue algae from nitrogen, high nitrogen levels. We're, we're here tonight to bring this to your attention also, that this is not just a Fremont issue. This is a citizens of Nebraska issue, and that we need everyone to say, "What do we want for our children? What do we want for ourselves? We don't even have to worry about children. What do we want? Do we want to pay for the damages that a corporation inflicts upon the state? The taxpayers will handle it." Because once we have, once we have to put RO filter systems in like Des Moines, I guarantee you Costco's not paying that bill. The taxpayers of this state are going to be paying that bill. And now, but the health, the health aspects of this, who's going to pay those bills? So, once again, thank you for letting us speak.
One minute.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
I have a big, big list of notes, but I always forget them, so. Thank you.
Okay, next person? And what we'd like, I'd like you to do is, as one, as we come up with a one minute for each person, the next person can come up and sign in at the other microphone and be ready to talk, so.
You know, I had some questions in Mr. Rupert, if I may.
Mr. Rupert? Why don't you come back up? She has some questions for you.
Did you have an opportunity to testify before the Fremont City Council of some of these concerns?
Uh, yes. I may add, you're much more plush than the Fremont City Councils. We spent a lot of time there, so. Uh, yes, we have.
I know, I'm reading in some of the discussions, and it talks about the treatment plant, the new treatment plant in Fremont. But it was very confusing to me, and I don't know if they explained it to you, or if you recall them talking about this. It said, "Even though the new plant in Fremont is designed to remove nitrogen, more overall nitrogen will be initially discharged in the Elkhorn River." Then they say, "Ultimately, with added growth in town, this amount will actually decrease." The city's permit does not and will not require nutrient removal in the near future. Did they address that, or?
Not very well. Not very well at all. And in fact, Dr. Alan Kolokh is here to kind of explain to you the different, different aspects of that. But the processing plant itself, probably controllable to a certain point, the nitrogens. We're, our concern with the plant is the pathogens, that the waste treatment plant will not get out. The somnella, the coli, the lesteria, those are, those are, those are untreatable. They will be discharged into our rivers. Our concern for the high nitrogen levels is the 400 chicken barns and the, and the litter that will be placed on the fields as a, as a fertilizer. Chicken manure is somewhat unmanageable to, I shouldn't say unmanageable, but depending on how you compost it, depending on when you spread it, the nitrogen levels can be quite high in the, in the manure, or they can be quite low. So we're saying that the NDEQ does not have enough enforcement to, to make sure that the nutrient management plans that the people, that they're talking about are stringent enough to make sure that, that chicken manure is placed how it should be, when it should be, where it should be. In my notes that I didn't get to, one of the things that we have is a steady incline from the 1970s up to now in nitrogen and phosphorus in our waters. Up to now, that has been really a process of the way we row crop now. We've gone fence row to fence row. We go right up to the creek bank. We don't have green belts in place anymore. We, you know, we, we have a lot of erosion. We lose two pounds of soil for every pound of corn we grow. That soil is going into our streams. That soil is carrying excess nitrogen, phosphite, phosphorus, atrazine, glyphosate into our water. We have a bigger issue. I mean, my God, sometimes I sit here and talk about the Costco project. Our environment is being hammered from just about every direction I can talk about tonight. Our concern here is that we are opening the door to even more excess. And we, we need, as a citizen of a state, to get ahead of this. Maryland, trying to clean the Chesapeake Bay up. No one stopped the CAFOs from being built there. Now the taxpayers are paying over a million dollars a year to have excess chicken manure picked up, loaded up on trucks, taken to Ohio and Indiana, because, because the Chesapeake Bay is dead in areas. What, you know, once again, my question is, where do we stop this? Now? Or do we stop it when we are in really bad trouble?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Carstens. I live at 2601 North 44th, apartment number one in Lincoln. I would like to read a letter that I have here from Janice Mulhoff. She's with the League of Women's Voters of Nebraska, and they are at 4600 Valley Road, Suite 306 in Lincoln. Chairman Christensen and members of the Lincoln City Council, groundwater is Nebraska's most precious, precious resource. In Nebraska, the Natural Resources Districts, NRDs, and the Natural, and the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality, NDEQ, share responsibility for the quality of groundwater, which is used by most municipalities, including Lincoln. Fremont is located in the Lower Platte North NRD, LPN NRD. According to their website, since 1985, the Lower Platte North NRD has been monitoring nitrate levels across the district. In certain areas of the district, nitrate levels have already exceeded the health standard of 10 parts per million, and in other areas, contamination seems to be on the rise. This was the major impetus for the creation of the Groundwater Management Area in 1997. Excessive nitrates in drinking water, often linked to irrigated row crop production, can endanger pregnant women and infants by interfering with the oxygen-carrying capacity of the blood. Groundwater contaminated with nitrates is toxic to humans. The discharge from the Costco-Lincoln Premium Poultry Project and the manure, litter, and waste from the poultry confinement operations that will be spread on irrigated cropland across the watershed raises concerns that the rising nitrate contamination will be further increased. Most of the 11-county area where the, where the poultry barns will be located is already under Phase 1 restrictions for fertilizer application, which includes: The amount of organic fertilizer, liquid or dried manure, sludge, or composted organic waste allowed per acre per year will be based on the method of collection and storage, land application type, land application method, type of crops or cover crops, soil types, landscape features, source of manure, and previous manure application rates. Fall application of commercial nitrogen fertilizer is prohibited on non-sandy soils before November 1st. Fall and winter application of commercial nitrogen fertilizer is prohibited on sandy soils until March 1st. Our concern is that there has been no comprehensive study of the impact of the year-round application of the UN composted poultry, poultry waste and manure have on the already compromised groundwater in the LPN NRD, which is directly upstream from the city of Lincoln watershed protection area. This is especially a concern during, during fall and winter, when the ground is frozen, and during spring flooding, when the commercial nitrogen application is currently prohibited. What protections will be in place to prevent poultry waste and manure from washing into the Platte River and leaching into the groundwater so vital to the city of Lincoln? NDEQ is requiring upgrades to the Fremont wastewater treatment plant, which will, that will remove some percentage of the nitrogen. What is the impact of the 30% to 43% of nitrogen that will not be removed on both the water in the Platte River and on groundwater where nitrates are already increasing? It appears that more study is needed, based on the NRD reports. Economic development is important to Nebraska, but not at the expense of careful planning and protection of our most precious resource, uncontaminated groundwater. Thank you. Janice Mulhoff, Natural Resources District Director.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the city council. I will be relatively brief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. There is reports being passed out, and I will use the overhead. My name is Matt Gregory. I live at 632 North 25th Street in, here in Lincoln. I appear before you today, not as an expert, but as a concerned citizen who has read the Nebraska Department of Environmental Qualities 2016 Surface Water Quality Report, and I have become aware of some disconcerting information about our water. The section that you've been provided with concerns the Lower Platte River Basin and includes Lincoln and the surrounding areas. The full 2016 NDEQ Water Quality Integrated Report can be found on NDEQ's website. So if you look at the bottom of page two, there are definitions of categories of water bodies. And onto page three, category five is what we want to be looking at. And we have a definition of category five, which is the most impaired category for water bodies, a water body where one or more beneficial uses are determined to be impaired by one or more pollutants, and all of the total maximum daily loads, TMDLs, have not been developed, and category five waters are subject to EPA approval or disapproval. Well, I've got some bad news for folks that aren't aware. 202 streams making up 28% of streams nationwide, statewide, excuse me, and 179 lakes making up 81% of lakes statewide are category fives. And we can see this on page eight in table 63.
Mac, if you put it on there just as if you were reading it, then we'll be able to read it. Nope.
Turn it on the.
Rotate it. Rotate it again.
You're sideways right now.
There you go.
There, that's better.
Yep, there you go.
Many water bodies in Lincoln and the surrounding area have been highlighted for you, but I just wanted to touch on a couple of examples. Holmes Lake and Salt Creek. On LP9, we have Holmes Lake, and that has pollutants of concern, including nitrogen, mercury, and phosphorus, which can cause excess algae. On LP20, 21, excuse me, we have Salt Creek, and, which has equali and selenium. The latter's long-term effects being hair and fingernail loss, damage to kidney and liver tissue, damage to the nervous and circulatory systems. And both Holmes Lake and Salt Creek contain hazard index compounds, which can be seen on the last page, LP25. It's the highlighted area at the bottom, and these are full of some very long words that I will leave you to read and pronounce if you would like. The one that jumps out at me is DDT. So if this scale of pollution exists, and NDEQ has so much work ahead of them as it is, we don't want to add an additional 17 million bird chicken farm and the nitrates it will produce to their workload. We need to focus our cleanup efforts on the mess that we've already got. The costs associated with cleanup and its health effects could be astronomical. Discharged waste from the Fremont operation would be dumped into the Elkhorn River, just upstream from the Ashland Wellhead location that provides drinking water for Lincoln residents. Our water here in Lincoln is already heavily impacted, and we have no room for worsening water quality. The chicken farm may be out of Lincoln city limits, but its effects are not. This is about protecting Lincoln's water. So in conclusion, I call for an independent analysis, not tied to special interests such as Costco, on the effects of the Fremont Chicken Farm in order to further understand the impacts on our water, economy, and health. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Matt, where did you say that people can find this report?
On the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality website.
I mean, they just click on it and the report pops up, or do they have to navigate something, or?
I'm not sure. I can send you a link.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Alan Kolok. I am the Director of the Nebraska Watershed Network out of the University of Nebraska Omaha. I'm also the Director of the Center for Environmental Health and Toxicology out of the College of Public Health at the Med Center.
Could you spell your last name?
Yeah, it's K-O-L-K.
And tell us your address.
It's 2122 South 1063 Omaha. And I've been asked to come here by Graham Christensen and others, relative to being, in a way, an expert witness relative to the issues associated with the Costco Chicken Processing Plant and downstream water quality. And the take-home message, if I run out of time, the take-home message is this has the potential to deliberately, to definitely cost the taxpayers of Lincoln money. And so, but let's start upstream, and really, and I mean, let's start at the, at the location of the processing plant. The processing plant is going to, the effluent from the processing plant will be taken care of by the wastewater treatment plant of Fremont. They are currently, we were there just a few weeks ago, they are currently in the process of upgrading the plant, and it's at least possible that with the upgrade, they will be able to handle the nitrogen and the other effluent from the processing plant itself. And I think really, relative to the two, that's the lesser of the two issues relative to Lincoln's drinking water supply. Relative to the supply, I think as, as some individuals have already discussed, the real issue is the application of the litter, which is the feces, the feathers, and the bedding from the animals onto fields. That is going to be allowed to occur 12 months a year. Therefore, they are going to be putting it on snow, on top of ice. And as any of you know, if you've thrown anything on your yard on top of ice and snow, once it, spring comes, it's going to run off, and it's going to run off into the Elkhorn River. That's going to happen. That's currently happening today relative to the other CAFOs in the Elkhorn River, which are the beef, the beef finishing feedlots. And it's happening now, which, very quickly, the Elkhorn River is already an impacted river. So it's not as if we have the Niobrara, which is a wild and scenic river that's fairly pristine. It's already an impacted river, and we're adding more impact on top of the impact that's currently occurring. That's, that's a concern. Now, when that water moves downstream, it's ultimately going to hit the aquifer that Lincoln has its wellheads in. As a resident of Omaha, fortunately, our wellheads are upstream from the confluence of the Elkhorn with the Platte, so it's not as large of an issue with us as it is with you. You, on the other hand, are further west and downstream, you're actually downstream of the confluence of the Elkhorn and the Platte. So there is the possibility that that Elkhorn-contaminated nitrate-rich fluid can actually get into your drinking water supply. The benefit, which we all as Nebraskans share, is that we live on top of the Ogallala Aquifer, and we basically are living on top of a sand filter. So our drinking water is underneath a sand filter. The sand filter does a reasonably good job of cleaning our water. That's different than what's going on in Iowa, because they tend to drink surface water. Doesn't mean there isn't a problem. What it means is that we have a natural filter that's helping us. We take advantage of that. I know for a fact Omaha has, has, remediates, based on the time of year, again, thinking about spring being a really disconcerting time, Omaha remediates what wellheads they take water from, based upon the time of year. In spring, they move the waterheads further away from the main basin of the river because they have, they don't want that contamination. So the question is, you're playing Russian roulette, right? You're playing Russian roulette with this idea of, is that sand filter going to remediate the problem? I can't say that it is. I can't say that it isn't. It needs to be studied, and, and I think as a city council, you need to have concern about that. Very quickly, what are the concerns? Has been, what has been mentioned already? Nitrates, carcinogenic, steroids, pharmaceuticals, that they're going to be giving those chickens. There are serious public health concerns, so that Lincoln may wind up in the inevitable situation where you either have to remediate, and you can talk to Des Moines about how expensive that remediation is, or you're going to be dealing with increased health costs. And you don't want a bunch of people sitting in here in city council that have leukemia or other adverse health outcomes from those high nitrates and that ultimate cancer concern. So I, I implore you, I would strongly encourage that you at least illustrate your concern relative to the processing.
Dr. Kolok, thank you very much for coming. You know, we've read some reports where, one report says organic nitrogen is less mobile in soil and is considered a safer source of nitrogen for crops. But is, is that true? Like you mentioned, that in the winter months, it just sits on top. And what about runoff situations if we have heavy downfalls or torrential rains that we've been experiencing certainly in 2015? What happens to those nitrates at that point in time?
Two, two points I'd just like to address relative to that very quickly. The first is that nitrogen is a chemical that's involved in other organic molecules, and it changes form, right? So bacteria in the environment will change the form. So it can be an organic nitrate in the form of the chicken poop or cattle poop initially, but when it gets into the water, that can, that can run from ammonia to urea to nitrates to nitrites, depending on how it's being interacted upon relative to the bacteria. Very, very different. DDT was brought up before. Very, very different with DDT. DDT is always DDT as it moves downstream. Nitrate changes form as it moves downstream. So, organic nitrate is not always organic nitrate. So that's part of the issue. The other, the other point that you brought up is that we have a station on the Elkhorn River, right outside Omaha. We've been monitoring the Elkhorn River for the last six years, not so much with nitrates, although we're starting to. We're monitoring, monitoring for organic chemicals, basically pesticides, and every time in the spring we get a strong rainstorm, pesticide spike. I'm absolutely convinced the same thing's happening with nitrates. So it is a, in the springtime, it is a discharge-driven system. You get a rain, you're going to get it in the, in the system. And again, if you think about it from the drinking water perspective, right, you may be below EPA concerning standards, then you get a rainstorm, and you may, you may go 100-fold over standard, and you may be 100-fold over standard for a few days, and then come back down. Well, what does that do to the drinking water supply? And really, for, for an old guy like me, maybe it's not that big of a deal, but definitely for pregnant women, it's a real concern, both relative to the pesticides and relative to nitrates, relative to a developing fetus. So, so again, I think it's a ticking time bomb that you're hoping that the, that the sand filter does its job. Is there unequivocal, unequivocal evidence that it will do its job? No, there isn't. So you're, you're, in a way, you're kind of playing Russian roulette with the drinking water supply of Lincoln.
So you said that you have, or University of Nebraska has a monitoring station, but does NDEQ have a monitoring station? Do they, and how often do they monitor? Do they take samples? Do they analyze them? Do they have the staff to do that? And what about the, like, the 400 to 500 producing barns? Are they going to have monitoring stations at each one of those? How?
They, the, that's a really good point. And the, and, and since the chicken, the chicken processing plant is still to be developed, let me just give you an analog from the beef CAFOs, the beef animal feeding operations around the state. There are literally thousands, if not tens of thousands, of those feeding operations across the state of Nebraska. They all need to be regulated because they all have animals depositing material on the surface which can potentially roll, run off. It's a little bit, this information's a little bit old, and I may, I may defer to my, my colleagues, but the last time I checked, they had two individuals that monitored for the DEQ statewide. So kind of, that kind of gives you a cost-benefit analysis, right? It's not that the DEQ's not doing their job, they're just, they're just understaffed and, and not really capable of doing the type of, of regulation that you might think that, that you might just inappropriately think is de rigueur, they're just not doing it.
What type of testing would you recommend that they put in place for the producers? Or what is the obligation of the producers to, to make sure that they contain any runoff or prohibit that fertilizer that's sitting on the soil from running off and?
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's another hour conversation, because I mean, there's a number of different remediating, I mean, the very simple, the very simple answer to that question is, if you put in buffer strips, so that you have a strip of non, non-cultivated land between the, the crop or where the area where the manure is being sprayed and, and the river, that can help enormously. However, you're asking then the farmers to take that money of that, that cultivated area out of their pocket and put it into something else, and that's a, that's a tough sell. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that shouldn't be done, I'm just saying it's, that becomes politically very difficult to initiate.
So have they talked about remediation efforts or good agricultural practices to help contain or control any runoff for all these producers? I mean...
It depends on when, it depends, and I'm not trying to be evasive to the answer, but it really depends on when you say "they," who you're talking about "they" are. Because what individuals will say is that it's not going to be a problem. And, you know, in the, in the perfect world, if the application is done correctly, and if everything goes 100% according to plan, there may not be issues. But again, do you want, does the City of Lincoln want to take that risk? And basically, just effectively say, okay, Fremont, you can do what you want, and we're okay with it, even though it may lead to costing us, our taxpayers, substantial costs down the road.
Well, they talked about having third-party inspectors be hired by the farmers, the producers, working in conjunction with the plant to certify that that individual farmer has safe practices and has put in place all the environmental mitigating efforts that would certify that they're doing a great job. Is that likely, or who's setting the standards?
I think the question would come, in a way, the question would come back to you as city council members, is that a risk that Lincoln is prepared to take relative to the safety of your drinking water? And is that a risk that, that you're all willing to take? And, and I, I think that's, that's kind of where it comes down to. And personally, in my, my professional opinion, is it's without, it's not really worth the risk. It's just not worth the risk.
Yeah, you had something for your question?
Well, I, I still have a follow-up, more questions, but is there any municipality, county, or state in your research that you've come across that has put in place guidelines, statutes, regulations, when it comes to the resource of, of water and the impact all fertilizers have on it? Is there someone that is on the cutting edge or leading the way and with the best practices?
Yeah. There, there are a number of, there was actually, and I don't remember the county in, in Nebraska, but issues that are consistent to what we're talking about have been dealt with, with other counties within the state of Nebraska, relative to swine CAFOs. And there has been limitation on the number of swine barns and the size of swine barns that have gone into counties for the very reason that we're, that we're talking about, relative to water quali, relative to the waters, the safety of the water, of the drinking water. So yeah, and, and that's just within Nebraska. And if you look at other states, that's also true as well.
Okay. I'll let someone else ask some more questions, but I have like more.
We're here to hear from them.
Well, that's what a question is for, to get them to tell me more. That's okay. I monopolize these questions.
Can I, can I just, you mentioned that the big issue is the application of fertilizer, the chicken litter manure. We heard from city staff in a pre-council that that would happen one to two times a year. Is that a threshold that's unacceptable, or would you, I mean, do you imagine?
As you're winning, it's too much.
My understanding, and Graham can probably give a little bit more detail on this, but because we've both been at hearings where we've had, we've heard different things, but my understanding is that, Matt, let's just, let's just back up for a second and consider what we're talking about here. We're talking about 17 million chickens. Each one of those chickens is going to poop multiple times a day. And that is, so that, that is a constant stream, not to get overly graphic at dinnertime, but that's a constant stream of manure that's hitting the environment, right? So, application twice a year would mean that that manure is going to be store-housed for 362 days out of the year and applied on the other two days left. That's not what we've heard. What we've heard is that application will, will be going on 12 months out of the year. So it'll be going on in the winter, it'll be going on in the spring, it'll be going on effectively all the time. Again, because you have a constant supply. So that, that's going to have to be applied.
Okay. And we've, we've also been told that nitrate contaminants drawn down from our city wells are significantly lower levels than what happens at the point of entry of the river. Do you have any thing you need us to know? What would we need to know about the difference between groundwater and the, what's coming?
Sure. And, and that, that's true. I mean, and again, as I said a few minutes ago, there is a, we are all blessed in Nebraska by the fact that the vast majority of us are drinking groundwater the majority of the time, and we are, we are getting an ecosystem service from that massive sand filter that is being, that is, that is cleaning our water for free. And we all, we all benefit from that in Nebraska 365 days out of the year. The question, though, is what's the capacity of that filter? And how will that filter respond to pulses of chemical? When those pulses of chemical are coming from rainstorms, so they're going to be intermittent. So, so it's not as if, it's unlike the wastewater treatment coming out of the processing plant, right? There, they're going to kill the same number of animals every day, so the waste will be more or less the same hour after hour, day after day. And again, I think that's, that's actually a good thing, because that can be remediated, because if you know what the issue is coming in, you can remediate against that on the downstream side. And truthfully, again, as I said before, of the two issues, I'm not really as concerned about that one, about the, the effluent from the processing plant itself. It's this unknown of modeling how that, how the manure that's spread on fields is going to alter the concentration of nitrates in the surface water, and how that surface water's going to interdigitate with the groundwater that you're drinking. That's the unknown. And it, it doesn't matter who stands up here. If someone stands up here and says, I can definitively tell you that Lincoln's water will be safe despite this potential confrontation with this effluent, I would, I would, I would ask them to show me the money, because I don't know where they're coming up with that. I'm not saying that it's not safe, I'm saying that it is an unknown, and it's a risk. And it's a risk that point-blank is going to cost Lincoln money at the end of the day. You will be dealing with this problem if the plant goes in, sooner or later. It will cost you money, down, down, downstream, no pun intended.
What is the difference between the denitrification, denitrification plan in Des Moines? You said it was a surface water. And is it something that we would have to invest in?
Yes.
If whoever monitors the nitrogen level, I know certainly our Public Works Department would be, monitors our, our well water constantly, but...
It would be the same. The process would most likely be the same. It's just, Des Moines, because they're dealing with surface water, in, in Des Moines, when it, when they have a rainstorm, the water goes underground, and in Iowa, something like 80-plus percent of the state is tiled. So under, underground, there are pipes. Those pipes were put in 100 years ago, right? And because Iowa used to be a swamp, and now it's, it's corn and soybean rotation. Those pipes are effectively mainlining that water... it's corn and soybean rotation. Uh, those pipes are effectively mainlining that water right back into the stream. So when it rains, it's a direct, um, conduit of that water back into the stream. And then Des Moines is drinking, uh, the Des Moines residents are drinking surface water. So they're experiencing a more dramatic problem than we experience here. So that's what I meant when I was saying that there's a difference between Iowa and, and Nebraska. Where we, we reap the benefits of our aquifer, which they don't have. They ha, their tile system is, is, is much more problematic from a drinking water perspective. But again, what you, what you, what we are all doing is we are all saying, "We really hope that the aquifer s, uh, sand filter does its job." Because if, if it does not, then we're Des Moines. The only thing between us and Des Moines is a couple hundred feet of sand. And that's, it, it, and it, and it works and it's, and, and again, it, it's to our benefit. But given the loads that we're going to be experiencing, is it going to be enough? I can't stand here and definitively say that during a massive rainstorm, you know, the perfect storm, when everything goes wrong, will that be enough? I can't stand here and definitively say that it would. And I would argue that anyone can.
Has there been any other plant of this size or magnitude anywhere else in the United States that has anticipated that 400 to 500 producer barns?
Oh yeah. The, if you look at the Delmarva Peninsula, um, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia, um, whether it's a single processing plant and that level of barns, I can't say that definitively, but they've been dealing with, that's the, that has been the egg and chicken basket of the United States for decades. Uh, they've been experiencing this, this problem for quite some time.
So who establishes the regulations? Are they federal regulations or are individual states?
Relative to groundwater con, or excuse me, relative to land application of surface water, there are effectively no real regulations on a federal level. That's just not something that's, because it's a, it, because it's a non-point source contaminant, right? So you can't look at a pl, a plant and say, like in the old days in, uh, on, on the Great Lakes when there were industrial plants and you could say, "Okay Ford," or, "Okay GM," or, "Okay, um, US Steel, you're putting too much of this into the Great Lakes." There's, there's no one point. So it's very, very difficult to regulate. So there are no real federal regulations from that perspective. Now, once it gets into a drinking water supply, there will, there can be. But when it's surface water, there will be, um, daily maximum loads, right? And, and the Elkhorn already, as was said before, the Elkhorn already periodically exceeds daily maximum loads. But there's no real regulation of who upstream, you know, who could, what plant upstream can we close down? Because there is none. Because it's a non-point source problem.
So this could very well happen, that we wouldn't be able to say it was those five barns, you know, ju, directly west of-
Absolutely. Unfortunately, that is true. And unfortunately, that creates the issue. But again, if you, and, and I, I recognize per, from a legal perspective, this gets really complicated and really tenuous. But you have a com, you have a system, and, and Jane, thank you, because I think you're really, I think we're really elucidating the issue here. And that is, you have a system within the watershed, uh, the Elkhorn River watershed, where there is already contamination. That contamination, as it moves downstream, is remediated before it hits the tap here in Lincoln. Both naturally through ecosystem services and the, and the, the, um, seepage through the, the, uh, sand filter. And then also, of course, the, the Lincoln, um, drinking water facility is also remediating water to make sure it's, it's within compliance as well. Now we're adding an, uh, now, we're adding an unknown additional load. Now we know what the load, we know the numbers, uh, which has been said before, 17 million chickens, 300,000 chickens processed daily. We know the magnitude, but can I stand here and tell you what's that going to represent relative to load of nitrogen into the Elkhorn River? That's, that's, um, that needs more study than certainly what's been done thus far.
So who besides you in the state is doing this research?
Um, the short answer there is no one. I, I, that's, that's who's do, the, as of right now, no one. Specifically talking about the Elkhorn River.
Other questions?
I would just like to add, just as a comment, uh, again, I'm, I'm here representing the College of Public Health at the med, the Nebraska Medical Center. Uh, I am more than happy to continue to facilitate a dialogue with the city council. So if there's any questions that you have, um, uh, after this, after this hearing, um, I'd be, I'd be happy to, um, be involved in those conversations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn.
Thank you. I almost forgot my name here. It's John Schauer, uh, S-C-H-A-U-E-R. And my address is 5020 Waverly Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I worked at the NDEQ from 1987 until 2009. So I, I'm not here to defend D, the DEQ's policies or any of the regulations, but I could give you some insight as to some of the thought process. And, and working in government, as, as you're aware, there's always, you're short on budget, you're short on personnel. So with that said, we have to look at how this is from a compliance perspective because I was a water compliance person for nearly 25 years. And what Costco and Lincoln Permian Poultry has under contract will be the growers have to fall under what they call a nutrient management plan. They have to abide by that or, or are supposed to abide by it. And that will dictate to them that they cannot apply the chicken manure above the agronomic uptake of what the crop can use. Then on the other hand, you have the NDEQ that, that has the regulations. And, and what they do are the water quality studies, which were presented tonight that showed the water quality violations in the body of water. The problem is, from a compliance perspective, between this hand and that hand, there's a big void. Nobody looks at after the farmer has their nutrient management plan in place and they're required to, to follow that. They do have regular inspections by NDEQ, by field inspectors. But what they apply to the field and what runs off and what leaches in the groundwater, that's not monitored. The only way you catch the problem is in the DEQ's water quality studies or what Allen does on the Elkhorn River. And I guess the, the, the problem is with nobody looking in between everything upstream from the Lincoln wellfield, it's, the, the Levin County area that these chicken barns are going to be located, everything's located upstream from your wellfield. So you're going to get the brunt of, of whatever runs off the field on this non-point source. And, and you ask what type of testing do they do? They test for water quality in the rivers and the lakes, but any runoff from the farm fields, it's not tested. Nobody looks at that. And, and I think we should because then you get a more, um, real-world picture of what's happening on some of these farm fields and the runoff that occurs. And then Allen brought in the, the issue of, "Well, so what if it's in the river? Your, your groundwater wells are below the surface. They're sucking groundwater." Lincoln was part of this legislative bill in 1996. It was called LB 108. And at that time, our legislature recognized the connectivity between river water and groundwater, groundwater and river water. You can't separate the two. Lincoln was mainly concerned, and, and the other upstream people in the Platte Valley, on the quantity of water coming down the river. They didn't want the irrigators to use all the water up. So then the NRDs and DNR could start putting restrictions on some of the, so that the Platte River maintains the flow. But also in that bill, the, the quality was also an issue. So we're looking at the quality of the water now in the-
One minute.
And one of the main things that a lot of people haven't talked about, we talked about the nitrates, phosphorus is going to be an issue in the river, uh, the microorganisms that are going to be flushed from the manure. And the, my main concern is, and when I left DEQ in 2009, EPA was keying in on this, and the city might know more about this than I do right now, pharmaceuticals. 80% of the pharmaceuticals used in our country are used for, for livestock production. And how do you treat for pharmaceuticals? Growth hormones, steroids, antibiotics. The good news is you could do it, but it's, it's going to cost the city. If you start having problems in your wellfield, it's going to cost you hundreds of millions of dollars, if not over a billion dollars. And other issue, there's going to be 1.4 billion pounds of chicken manure. That's billions with a B. That's four times the amount of human waste that Lincoln produces in one year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Can you tell us a little bit about NDEQ and their staffing and their capabilities? I think Dr. Kolok said that there's only two representatives that handle the state, but-
When, when I left DEQ, we had our, our water quality division as the, and inside that was surface water. And we had about five people that did, one did lakes, two did rivers. In the summertime, they did hire interns to help out on the water testing. And there could be up to five or six interns during the summertime that helps on the water testing.
So they talked about third-party inspectors for the producers. Wha, what is your opinion about the third-party inspectors?
That's the fox watching the chicken coop. Anybody that Costco or the farmer would hire to oversee them is the fox watching the chicken coop. It has to be an independent third-party inspector. And, you know, if it's DEQ, but, but I'm going to warn you right now, DEQ, there's, there's political vices that you get squeezed between, between Grow Nebraska and the environmental end of it. So it really, uh, you know, unless there's a group that gets together and actually goes out and looks at the water quality and looks at the runoff from the fields, that, that would be the, the best solution. But, but with Costco and the farmers hiring somebody, that's, that's, I would, as a compliance specialist, ex-compliance specialist, be the fox watching chicken coop. Or, or wait, fox watching the hen house.
Yeah. Is there any requirement currently in the books that if, uh, when there's a runoff that they monitor? So if, if they have a heavy torrential rainfall north of Fremont, do they test it? Because I know when you do construction, you know, if you have X amount of inches of rain and you do your mitigation-
Stormwater management plans?
Yeah. You have to, to have someone on site, your engineer.
You're aware that city of Lincoln is under SM4 stormwater management. The cities do. Farmers don't. And, and I don't know if that's because there's a big farm lobby in the United States. It, DEQ only works on, on federal regulations that come down the pike from the feds. So, so it's nationwide. The non-point source pollution is, is not monitored. But it should be. I mean, you get a real-world picture then of what's happening. And, and another thing, I, I would invite all of you to come to some of our meetings in Fremont. I think it'd be beneficial. We've been talking about this for over a year now. And, and the only reason I got drug into this whole mess was they were going to build the original, they were going to build the original processing plant north of Fremont, right next to our farm. And we knew nothing about it until it was already set in stone. And, and that's somewhat upsetting. But, but I don't have an issue with the processing plant. It's, it may, mainly the CAFOs.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, members of the council, for your patience in, in, in listening to this, uh, and being here this evening. My name's Ken Winston. My add, address is 4021 Terry Lane. And I guess I'm just going to talk briefly about a couple of things that haven't been talked about tonight. Um, well, first of all, the, the big question is why should you care about this? And I think that's been addressed by several other people who've spoken before me. So I don't think I need to address that. But the real question is what can the city of Lincoln do? And what can this, then, what can the members of the city council do? And that's something I've been thinking about a bit because I've been around the legislature and, and been around policymaking for the last 35 years. And so I know that, that basically, um, that the DEQ is going to do what they're ordered to do, what they're required to do under law. And so, uh, and if a plant meets all the requirements of law, then they're going to get their permit, as, as someone said. But that, I think, still does not alleviate, uh, the potential of, of action. And I think that there's an opportunity for the city council, for the city of Lincoln, to send a message to the DEQ and to send a message to the governor stating your concerns based upon the things that were discussed tonight. So that you're on record raising the issues that were raised tonight about the potential for contamination of your groundwater, the potential of the cost to the city, to the, the potential cost to the people of the city of Lincoln. So those kinds of things, I think, just going on record is a very important step that the city of Lincoln can do. Um, and, and asking that, that there be a moratorium. Now, I don't know if they will do that, but, but I think you can ask for a moratorium. You can say, "These issues need to be addressed. The kinds of studies that Dr. Kolok is talking about, they need to be done before we do this. Uh, and we need to have an environmental impact statement." So we know, we, to the best extent that we can, that we know that, and the, as Councilwoman, Woman Redb, Redbold talked about, we've got these extreme weather events now. Wha, where we have these rainfall events that we, that we didn't have 10 years ago or 20 years ago, where all of a sudden, I mean, how can you control that? You can't control the, the application. If you, if you've got a field that's covered with manure, it's going to go in the stream. And it's going to increase the nitrate level. It's going to increase the contamination level. So I would ask that you, that you go on record and that you state your concerns. Now, there is one other area that nobody's mentioned tonight that I would encourage the council to step in and send a message to the legislature. There's this, there's an interim study, LR4, that's supposed to study water quality in ways that the state can address water quality. Um, the Natural Resources Committee at the present time is not planning to have any hearings on it. I would encourage the, the council to go on record to contact the, uh, the, uh, committee, the Natural Resources Committee. And Senator Hughes is the chair. Senator Geist is on the committee. And contact the members of the committee and tell them that you want to have hearings and that you want them to address these issues. And then I guess I just wanted to talk just briefly about one other thing that nobody else has talked about. I remember one time Susan, Susan Seacrest, she was the person who founded the Groundwater Foundation in, in Nebraska. And I remember her talking once and she said, "The best way to clean up an aquifer is to make sure it doesn't get contaminated in the first place." And I think that's what you've got to do here. You've got to make sure that it doesn't get contaminated in the first place. And, um, and I guess the reason it keeps coming to mind for me is the fact that, that, uh, years ago, I got involved in the Mead Minitions Study. And I keep getting, uh, the Mead Minitions Plant, there was a contamination of, of a groundwater offer there. And I keep getting the notices about it. 70 years after it was originally contaminated, it's still-
One minute.
And so let's make sure that doesn't happen with Lincoln's water supply. And would encourage you to take the, the appropriate steps to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you very much.
So Ken, you mentioned the, um, LR4 study, the Natural Resource Committee.
That's correct.
Are, are they meeting this summer?
Uh, well, I don't know, but you could contact, uh, Senator Hughes's office. He's the chairperson of the committee. And I would encourage you to encourage him and the members of the committee to ha, to hold hearings. And, uh, maybe if they hear from enough people, uh, and if they also hear from, from people who, uh, represent a substantial community, they would be more li, more inclined to hold hearings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Nancy Packard of 3037 Sewell Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. I just have a couple of things to, things to say after the weight of all the information you've been given. One is that with my water bill this month, I was, there was a sheet explaining it and saying to go online to see, uh, how our water is in Lincoln. And I noticed that our nitrates are in the 2% rather than the 10% level. So we really are, we are at a, an enviable level. And all the more reason to keep it there. The second thing is, I'll just have a little bit of levity. I grew up on a farm when we had, mm, cows and we had, [chewing] pigs and we had [chewing] chickens. And when I grew up, um, we fed the chickens our potato peels and, um, you know, there was a little bit of chicken manure. We ate the- We ate the chickens, we ate their eggs, and the next spring, we'd get more chickens. All farms were like that, with a few cows, a few pigs. That was rural Nebraska. Probably 40 years later, when I was living in Hastings, you know, the munitions depot in Hastings has big quonsets, and underground in one of them, they were raising hogs. It was such a stench at certain times of the year, in the spring when it was moist. And also, I remember that people had to be careful of the boots they wore because of the contaminants there, that I think it was that they not somehow spread diseases among the hogs. Later on, I lived in an area where there was a hog plant probably four miles away, and you know, certain days, you'd really smell the hog plant. Now, I drive to Sutton each Sunday, and I drive past a meat kettle. What it is is a manure hill with cattle, more and more and more cattle. My point is that we've very rapidly gone from a pretty rural state with manageable effluent and recycling of all that to a condition where it's just terrifically important that we stop and take action. I really think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to stop something that could be catastrophic for Nebraska. People keep saying it's going to cost us to clean the water in Lincoln. Well, not only that, it's going to cost this population. Who wants to move to a city? Who wants to thrive a city where your water is contaminated? So we all have to be caretakers, just starting right now. It couldn't be more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right.
Hello, my name is Graham Christensen, spelled like Chairman Christensen in-
Correct way.
The correct way, I see, and like that. Thank you, city council members, for listening to this discussion. Senator, or, excuse me, Councilwoman Raybold, we have had a long track record of trying to kind of get some of these questions answered from folks in Costco and through the city of Fremont, through the public process. But you had asked some questions on that earlier, and some of the issues that we have had in engaging is that only on specific agenda items were we allowed to be able to speak, even at the big events that were held, particularly on this issue. So when folks would go up and talk about the issue, their questions were not answered. There was no back and forth, there was no human engagement or communication in any of these processes throughout the way, which has caused us, you know, to be here and still not have a lot of these questions answered. What you're looking at right now is a map, just so we have a little bit better of a visual about what's going on here.
Yeah, and vertical.
There you go.
And so, you can see here, kind of where the plant would be located, the processing facility, the feed mill, the hatchery, where the wastewater treatment facility is, and where the wastewater treatment facility, after it is renovated, will push excess waste into the Elkhorn River. And then you can see also, you have the Platte River to the west of the Elkhorn River there, and where they merge down by, just on top of Ashland, which is where Lincoln gets its drinking water from. What you're looking at potentially is several different areas of impact, as have been talked about quite a bit already today. But even Lincoln Water admitted that there would be a, some sort of impact on the river when they spoke. Think they said, there's something like, shouldn't be a significant impact, which means there's going to be something. And what they were assuming is that we would replace the fertilizer that's being used and applied on all this area up here with all of this chicken litter, and that's an assumption that I don't know is completely accurate either. So we'd have to do that, that perfect replacement to be able to make sure that we just let the contaminant levels raise a little bit, and that's a serious question. If you were to turn the page, I think what you're going to see is the Platte River near LaChara, so that's the first test, nitrate testing location for the United States Geological Service, just south of Fremont there. That would be the first reading that would come into that area. And you can see just quickly, they're at four and a half milligrams per liter, which is a one-to-one to that parts per million we always talk about. Ten parts per million is what the EPA level says is the standard for safety and health. But then turn the page again, and you can look at the Elkhorn River is another USGS testing, nitrate testing station by Waterloo. So that, once again, is ahead of this merger area. And you can see it's already spiking up to eight parts per million in the water in that area. A year ago, when I pulled this information, it had hit nine parts per million, so we're getting to fairly high levels. And if you were to look at Mr. Gregory's report further, you would notice the Elkhorn River is a category five, which is the most impaired that our waterways can be according to our state looks at those things, and also so is the Platte River. They're both category fives. So you have two category fives merging together, and when the Elkhorn and the Platte meet, that's the third chart that you have. And you can see that the Platte River testing at Lewisville, so just below Ashland, is almost double after the Elkhorn merges with it. So litter impact on both the Elkhorn River and the Platte areas-
One minute.
-create, you know, what I'd consider a perfect storm. And then, on the last page, skip to the last page, if there is an issue with the wastewater treatment facility, currently the highlighted is the Fremont wastewater treatment facility. That is discharging 539,000 pounds of nitrates as of last year. If that number goes up at all, which I don't know, I'm not an expert, some don't have as much concern, but that's a lot of infrastructure to develop. I think that needs to be looked into further. Page four, the one ahead, just shows Ashland, a couple of lower Platte South NRD wellhead sites, and we're looking at three, four, and five from the recent tests in 2016. So there is your data. I knew this was going to be a troubled situation about a year ago, when I first called into the Environmental Protection Agency to ask them about, you know, this location, and if they can have an ability to get involved in an environmental impact study. And they said, no, there's no-
It's time. Just wrap it up. Go ahead. And Jane will ask questions.
Okay. They, at that time, stated that, no, there's no federal trigger on this project, there's nothing to, you know, bring in a federal agency, and so there would be no study. But she said to me that she believed that this was one of the most problematic locations she had seen for a plant in her days, and I can't remember her name, but her name was like, it was Donna something, and she was the livestock operations manager over there. So we know there's no federal site. The DEQ doesn't actually regulate as far as looking forward to understand where contaminant levels are going. And so we really don't have an appropriate state regulatory procedure in place. And so therefore, you know, I think, and I can elaborate some more on what's going on in the state as far as the regulatory process if asked, but I guess what I'm here to ask for, until we get some of this stuff figured out, we should be calling for a complete moratorium on the construction of the project until we have information that lets us know what this impact is going to be. There is so much evidence in front of us that we already have concerns. The category fives, what Matt Gregory handed out, we know we have a concern going on right now, so we cannot take the risk of further impairing our waterways when we're already sitting category fives everywhere you look. Thank you.
So what are the regulatory initiatives that other municipalities and counties are looking at, or trying to work with the EPA to get them to look at our water resources?
My concern is, over the last couple decades, that instead of looking at concerns with water quality resources, all we've really done is try to expedite the process for being able to place more and more of these things into our state. And that is, examples of that are through adopting the livestock-friendly protocol that you're seeing county by county. That helps make, that makes it easier for the state government to be able to come in and be able to push forth through things without as much of a local process as there once had been. And then furthermore, more recently in the legislature, we looked at, and we did exactly what Iowa did, and we adopted the matrix system, which is what led to all the developments on waterways in Iowa, was led to the 750 impaired waterways, according to the Department of Natural Resources. And so instead of taking precautions on water quality, we are trying to accelerate the process right now. It will not just be Costco, although this albeit might be the worst possible location, but this is going to keep happening and happening. And since we've started discussions and talking about these things the last year or so, three more poultry operations have been proposed from the central to eastern part of the state. So it's coming. And it's a lot easier for them to do it than it ever has been. And we don't do any forward-looking of what impact's going to be 10 years down the road in my life, 20 years down the road in my life, or 30 years down the road for, you know, whoever is still, you know, trying to make good decisions for the community at that point.
Can you talk about the wastewater plant in Fremont? Is it going to have the capacity to, you know, the chicken processing plant will have the capacity, but will the Fremont water plant have the capacity? Are they, are they going to be filtering the affluent that's coming downriver that's further north of them? Are they going to be entrusted to do that? Or are people looking at investing in other denitrification plants further along or further upstream?
No, as far as investing in more denitrification, no, there hasn't been a discussion of any sorts on that. As far as what goes on with the wastewater treatment facility, I more or less yield those kind of questions to experts like John and probably Dr. Kolok and other folks that are a little bit more engaged with that. All I know is that 538,000 pounds was dumped in the Elkhorn of nitrates right above Lincoln last year. And when I approached the director of the NDEQ and asked him, you know, if this number was going to go down, I did not get a response. I asked him what the process would be to figure that out. That was, he was, was not able to answer that. And furthermore, when we talked about what we can do, you know, I was just told that you have to get involved with the state, because we just do what we're doing, or what we're told to do, and that's all we'll do. And so I don't anticipate there's going to be any extra measures whatsoever in this process.
Do the producers in all the different barns, do they understand the requirement or expectations of them? And are they prepared to deal with the production that they're going to be faced with?
The one thing that I can say is, or one of the things that I could say would be a step in the right direction, is that they do have a nutrient management plan in place, even though, which will give the farmer some sort of guidelines, even though the state doesn't mandate them to do that. So that's not even mandated, but they went forth and did that anyway. However, my concern with that becomes having interests that are hired by the interests that want to profit off of this project be carrying out the checkups to make sure the litter is in compliance with these standards. My belief is that DEQ should have ample staff and appropriate funds to be able to deal with this. This is something the state should look at. I just find it really peculiar when one private sector company hired by another is the person that's going to be out checking to make sure that there's compliance. I don't know these people, and it's nothing against the folks that are going to be doing those evaluations, but at the same time, that's not an independent authority, because they're getting paid to do this. So we need to back up before we do more of these kind of things and have a serious discussion on how we ensure that we're protecting our waterways from real third-party independent folks to do these kind of analysis. It's just not set up in place in our state regulatory facility to have anything to do with protecting our waterways.
I know Ken mentioned contacting Senator Hughes and Senator Geist, but I know that there's a public notice about the construction of the plant itself, and do you know about the public comment period, or?
The air quality comment section is just fired up. We haven't had time nor resources to be able to look at what impacts there will be to the water quality, except for the little bit that we were warned through the Johns Hopkins University research letter regarding the water and the wastewater treatment. And there's, and there's not even a public meeting that's guaranteed out of that unless they get enough input from that, otherwise it's just comments that flowed in. And obviously, we are talking about, we don't know this today, so that's a little bit problematic. Second of all, the wastewater treatment facility, that application is in. Those processes, or that notification will be being delivered to us shortly. There will be a chance yet to engage on that. Hopefully, we can get ample engagement on that to have a larger public gathering where we can discuss some of these things with the Department of Environmental Quality. I commend Senator Carol Blood for pushing forth LR4 to the Natural Resources Committee. There has been folks from all different areas of the state that want to see us take a statewide look. This is the first step to getting some of these comments, remarks, and information in front of the public body, in front of the state legislators. This is an important first step, but the dialogue that's been coming back right now, the most current dialogue is that Senator Hughes, the chairman there, has said that they are presenting information to their legal counsel, their legislative legal counsel, or maybe their committee legal counsel, and they're going to be reviewing it, and that's what I've heard as the latest. I don't know what that means. Before then, we were told there was no chance it was going to be heard this summer. So that'd be unfortunate if we can't have a further discussion beyond Lincoln, though we know we have, you know, a lot of things to talk about right here.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to testify?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln City Council, for providing a place for these things to be talked about.
You're welcome. I'm waiting, seeing no one else coming forward, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, it would move that we adjourn and remind citizens that we will not be meeting next week, and wish everyone a very happy Independence Day.
Happy Independence Day. Need a second?
Second.
Move by Carl, seconded by Larian. Please call the roll.
Miss Grinch?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ray Bold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes. We adjourn.
Six to zero.